All right, we ready all?
Yes.
Good. We open up, you edit everybody else, Sandy, I see just Mr. Katie, is that right?
Yep, that's all that I'm seeing for the attendees. Oh, here comes more people.
All right, let's get going. Evening all, this is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. Adequate notice to this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press and also sent to the Two River Times and the Star Ledger. That notice was also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. A copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. Copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as having requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting. Roll call please Sandy.
Mr. Nick Chesney.
Here.
Mrs. Quigley.
Here.
Mr. Ridgeway.
Here.
Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Ludman.
Here.
Dr. Lauffer.
Here.
Mr. Kinsella.
Here.
Mr. Shavetti.
Here.
And Mr. Leader.
Mr. Leader is absent tonight. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. All right, um, old business, we have the Macalduff hearing, 31 Heights Terrace. I understand we have received notice from Macalduff that they wish to be carried to the October meeting. I don't have that date in front of me, if you could help me out Sandy or Mr. Irene.
I believe that's October 7, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman.
I have the same date.
Okay. Is anybody here specifically for the Macalduff case? No hands? Okay, then I will make a motion to move the Macalduff hearing to the October 7th date without necessity of renotice.
And subject to the Appkin giving a stipulation extending time to act in which they, in the case they haven't already done so.
Thank you as always, Mr. Irene, yes.
Second.
Mr. Nick Chesney.
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley.
Yes.
Mr. Ridgeway.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
You're on mute Marty.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, Mr. Ludman.
Yes.
And Dr. Lauffer.
Yes.
And I understand that no one responded, Mr. Nuchesny, when you inquired if there was anyone in the audience on the Macalduff matter, but we should just announce one more time, the matter's been carried to the October 7, 2021 meeting of the board, also remotely via Zoom, without the necessity of renotice, so if there happened to be an interest parties, mark your calendar accordingly, there'll be no further notice. Thank you.
Thank you. New business, we also received a letter from Mr. Sartor regarding the Burke application, 104 Willow, requesting we carry that application to the October 7th meeting as well. Are there any interested parties here for the Burke application and only the Burke application? I don't see anyone. If that's the case, then I will make the motion to carry the Burke application to the October 7th meeting as requested, without the necessity of renotice, adding Mr. Irene's usual comment. Do you have a second?
Second.
Can Mr. Kinsella second?
Is that, if he's an alternate now, because he wouldn't be able to vote, we have full board tonight, right?
No, Mr. Leader is not here tonight.
Right, but Mr. Kinsella would be number eight if I count it correctly?
Uh, no, I think Mr. Shavetti would be number eight now.
So who is our first alternate?
Kinsella.
So then, Mr. Kinsella would be able to vote, right?
Right.
One, two, three, four, five.
Fantastic.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yes, and Mrs. Shavetti would not be able to. So yes, Mr. Kinsella can make the motion.
Proudly second to him.
Thank you.
Sorry. Mr. Nick Chesney.
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley.
Yes.
Mr. Ridgeway.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Ludman.
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer.
Yes.
And Mr. Kinsella.
Yes.
There you go.
And again, I recall, Mr. Nuchesny, that no one responded when we inquired if there are any interest parties here on the Burke matter. Nobody raised their hand?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. That business having been done, we have our first and only application tonight, Katie, 137 Grange Avenue, we'll anyone who is here from Katie, Sandy, can you promote them to the board?
And while we're getting set up, Mr. Vice Chairman, this matter was listed on the board's agenda for August 19, if I recall correctly.
Yes.
It was carried to tonight's meeting September 9 without the necessity of renotice. We reviewed the notice materials at the at the last hearing. We're going to swear in Ms. Gable, our professional planner, if you'd raise your right hand. You do swear testimony to the board to be truth, all truth, and nothing but truth?
I do.
And we're also going to swear in Mr. Gardella, our borough engineer and substitute board engineer, as I understand it, our regular board engineer, Mr. Kenny, had a conflict, and Mr. Gardella has been gracious enough to agree to cover for us, so we're going to swear Mr. Gardella is our board engineer. You do swear testimony to give the board to be truth, all truth, and nothing but truth?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, and we have counsel, here's Mr. Herbert, we'll let counsel put his appearance on the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening, Mr. Irene, Ms. Papa, and Ms. Gable, along with our engineer, Mr. Gardella, I appreciate everyone hearing us tonight. My name is Michael Herbert, I'm with the law firm of Parker McKay, and I am here to represent Stephanie and James Katie with regard to their application at 137 Grange Avenue, Block 22, Lot 53, in the R30 zone. We are seeking certain bulk variances to install over your patio around a portion of the pool in the Katie's backyard, and also approval for a U-shaped driveway in the front yard. The premises is approximately 22,513 square feet. As was stated, notice was published, and the board did take jurisdiction at its August 19, 2021 meeting. And with me tonight, I have several witnesses testifying as our engineer will be Bill Jensen of Jensen Design Group. The planner tonight will either be Christine Mizero Corfone or Justin Ossio of the Corfone Consulting Group, depending on who I'm able to get on here. And I just wanted to also put a couple of other things on the record, housekeeping wise, if that's all right, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Irene, we have an agreement with the neighbor I would like to put on, on the record.
Yeah, that's fine, Mr. Herbert, the only thing I might suggest before we get any further, now that we all made our introductions, Mr. Vice Chair, I just want to check with Ms. Gable to see if there were still any completeness items that perhaps we should address at the outset.
There are, there's several completeness waivers that were requested. Some of them are the typical ones, including Monmouth County Planning Board. That was, a waiver was requested, and we take no objection to the board granting that waiver. Same with Freehold Soil Conservation District, Monmouth County Health Department application. The applicant also requested a waiver for all copies of Eastman's covenants and deed restrictions. We recommended a waiver for completeness purposes only, and suggest the applicant provide testimony to address that completeness item. In the book schedule, it's item 37 in the zoning board checklist. The applicant requested a waiver for completeness purposes to include the building height, habitable floor area, square foot and ratio. We take no objection to the board granting that waiver since the applicant is not proposing any changes to the existing dwelling at this time. Another waiver is the size and location of any existing and proposed structures with all setbacks dimensioned. There was a survey submitted, but not all of the setbacks were dimensioned, including to the porches and some of the overhangs on the existing house. I was able to scale it with a, measure it with a scale to try to get, you know, a better look at what exactly the setbacks are that are existing in accordance with Fair Haven standards. However, we do recommend that, should the board act favorably, that this be addressed as a resolution compliance item. And then on to the application guidelines, the applicant requested waivers for floor plans showing existing and proposed conditions. There are no changes to the dwelling, so we didn't, you know, take no objection to that waiver. Same with the elevations of all sides of the structure with side, with string dimensions. There are no changes to the dwelling for any buildings on the property. The zoning schedule, which is kind of a repeat of previously, that needs to include habitable floor area and floor area ratio, that information also wasn't provided. Same with the detail of the, the detail to the calculation of the habitable floor area, and then also the location and type of attic access, all of these kind of coincide with, you know, an applicant proposing changes to the dwelling where this application doesn't involve that. And then the zoning officer also requested some items. But I believe that, for the most part, the zoning officer's concerns have been remedied, however, one item that the zoning officer requested was to provide information about driveways and a street opening permit for review and approval. And the applicant has requested a waiver for completeness, noting the permit will be attained once feedback from the board is received, and if construction is allowed to move forward. And then the other item is for information and calculation for proposed stormwater management at the property. And so, we do note that the revised survey includes an underground storage tank of some sort in the front yard. However, we suggested the applicant provide testimony and provide calculations. You know, at some point.
So the question to the board members are, are you satisfied with those items in terms of granting waivers for completeness only? You always reserve the right, if you need any additional information, prior to making your ultimate determination on the merits to require or ask for that information, the question is, are there any of those items that you're not inclined to grant waivers on at this time for completeness purposes only? If you're not inclined on any of those, then we have an issue with, we're not able to get to the merits unless those items are provided, where you grant the waivers for them all. If you are inclined to grant waivers for all of them, then we can move on to the merits, and as I say, if you determine that you need any of that information during the proceedings, you always serve the right to ask for it. So how does the, how do the board members feel with regard to those items on the?
I'm okay, I'm okay, but I did have one question, which is, it really doesn't, it had to do with the driveway opening and the permit. From what I recall, or the pictures that I've seen, the driveway opening is already there. Is that, is that accurate?
That is correct.
So why are we requesting a permit for a driveway opening that's already there then? Or requesting a waiver for a permit for a driveway of that, unless it's going to be permitted after the fact? Is that really what we're at for here then?
Was it abandoned?
My understanding is they're going to replace the existing aprons, so once they remove it and replace it with two new ones as indicated on the plan, they could, they'll file for that shoot opening permit, which is a process.
Okay.
But, but it sounds like that's an item that would be post-approval, if approval's granted. If approval's denied, they're not going to be pulling permits for that.
Right.
Correct.
I just, I just had a question while we're asking for a waiver, if, if it's already existing, we're fine. If that's the plan, then, then, then I'm good with that. Um, I don't have any issue granting the waivers for completeness. Does any of the board members have any comments, questions, opinions? No, then, then I'll make a motion to grant the waivers as delineated by Ms. Gable.
Second.
Mr. Nick Chesney.
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley.
Yes.
Mr. Ridgeway.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan. Mr. Ryan.
Sorry, audio problems, yes.
Mr. Ludman.
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer.
Yes.
Mr. Kinsella.
Yes.
Okay, I think, Mr. Herbert, we're back to you and any other housekeeping matters you may have before you want to introduce your first witness?
Mr. Irene, I really appreciate all the help. We have, I know, published on the Borough website are all of our exhibits, there are a number of exhibits, I, how would you like me to handle them?
It's entirely up to you. Some folks, in fact, I think we received a, an email from your associate inquiring whether we require them to be pre-marked, and I indicated through Sandy that we don't require it, we certainly allow it. I, I found it a little bit easier to mark as we go, otherwise we get numbers that are pre-marked that don't match the order in which we introduce them. But whatever's most convenient for you, it's, it's your, it's your show, you get to control it as you see fit.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Irene. There are just a, a number of items, if we could just place them in now, and then really, because I don't think we'll have to go back to them, we have, I guess we'd mark them as, with your permission, Mr. Chairman's permission, A1 would be the application checklist, A2 would be the 200-foot list, A3 would be the 3121 denial letter, A4 is the survey of the property, A5 is the driveway variance plan, the Jensen design, and then that'll be part of the testimony that we'll be bringing up very soon. And so, if we could at least do the first five, that would be great.
Okay, so A1 is the application, is that right?
That is correct.
A2 is the 200-foot list?
Yep.
A3 is the zoning officer's denial letter?
Correct.
A4 is a survey prepared by Justin, middle initial J, Hedges, PLS of Insight Surveying LLC, one sheet, November 14, 2020, no revision?
Correct.
A5 driveway variance plan, William E. Jensen, J E N S E N Junior, PE Jensen Design Group, one sheet, January 18, 2021, no revision? Or was there one revision?
Correct. One revision, Mr. Jensen, anything, there was, there was no, is there one revision on that one?
There's one revision, yes.
One revision, thank you.
What's our revision date on that, Mr. Jensen?
It's 8/16/21.
8/16/21, so that'll be the plan, we'll mark as A-5.
Yep.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Irene, I really appreciate all the help on this. The, my clients, the Kates who are here tonight, and, and again, we're, we're back into virtual, so I appreciate everyone looking at all the various boxes here, and appreciate everyone's time tonight. The Kates are very, they're active members of the Fair Haven community, and they had previously aspired to construct a pool and to maintain the pre-existing U-shaped driveway, but they ultimately amended their plan to construct only the pool and remove the U-shaped driveway to be compliant with the borough's requirements. And they, during this time, they were seeking to work out an agreement with their neighbor who they believe would object to any driveway application. So, in order to move forward while all this was going on, and as the pandemic came down on us all, the Katie family, and, you know, the Kates are wonderful parents, and they're very supportive of their kids. They wanted to do something that their family could enjoy while the pandemic was taking place last summer, and so they decided to build the pool at that point. Now they are back before the board, seeking to reinstall the driveway and make certain improvements to the pool patio area. And really, the driveway application has to do with their, their teenagers are starting to drive, so there's a safety issue. They also have their own safety issues as well, as well as parking issues, and then it's why they are here. Now, with regard to their neighbor, the Coles, they, an agreement was struck, and I did not know if their attorney is on this tonight, but their attorney, Mr. Going, Steve Going, and I know the board is mayor, Mr. Going of the Girdanoff firm, and I were able to come up with an agreement, and, and Mr. Chairman, with your permission, Mr. Irene, with your permission, I was just going to place the July 8 agreement, I'm just going to read it in if that's okay, if that, if the board is okay with that.
Are, are you going to submit a copy that we're going to mark also, Mr. Herbert?
I can submit a copy for you as well.
Okay, so why don't we just, for, for time being, why don't we mark it A6? The agreement between the Appkin and neighboring owner Cole? And you want to go ahead and read it in, go ahead.
Um, I, I'll try to summarize it, because I, I'm kind of constrained, so I, I know that, to read the whole thing may be a little bit too time-consuming, but briefly, the, the agreement is, is that the Coles will not, do not object to the application or the driveway. They made very clear in their email to us that they don't object to the driveway at all. I think the more worried with them was with regard to the plantings that were along the property. But, so they agreed not to object to the application, and our clients have agreed and have put into their, their property a 20-foot tall maple tree on applicant's side of the fence in order to better buffer the two properties. And all, all matters were done to protect the roots of the tree, and make sure it is established and that it will survive. There is a large tree in the front of the property, the applicant had originally proposed to remove that tree, it's part of this application, but now the applicant has agreed to withdraw that request. Side yard landscaping, the applicant has agreed to incorporate supplemental plantings inside your property, alongside your property line, dividing the properties in order to maintain the complete buffer. And the applicant has spent well over $50,000 in landscaping on all of this. With regard to the driveway and walkway improvements, the applicant agrees that, that they will protect the roots of the tree, the various trees in question on around the Coles property, and when conducting improvements. Rear yard improvements, the applicant has also proposed paver patio blocks, instead of a regular paved, paved patio, they'll use bluestone with grass strips in between in order to minimize impervious surface. So that agreement is, is now going to be marked as A6. And
Mr. Herbert, the, the Coles property is which side of the, of the applicants?
Sure, and, and we can go over this as the application proceeds, but if you are facing their, the, my client's property from the road, the Coles property is to the left of it, it's a longer driveway that goes back further. But we'll, we'll be going over that later on. But, yeah, they are, they are probably the closest neighbor, and the Kates have done a good job of going around to all their neighbors, and I am, I am told they have general support from the rest of the neighbors because it fits in with the neighborhood.
But, but we don't want to get into that here, sir. Mr. Irene.
Reese.
Mr. Irene.
There, we have made a recent
Can I ask a question real quick of our attorney, please?
Sure.
Um, how is that agreement different from any other letter that's submitted on behalf of a supporter to an application which would be considered hearsay?
Mr. Shavetti, I don't want to, I don't want to I don't want to speak for Mr. Herbert, but I think the, I'm going to assume that as part of whatever agreement
On what we consider as evidence versus hearsay.
I think I'm going to assume, and Mr. Herbert can, can address this as well, that as part of whatever agreement the Appkin reached with the neighbor, the neighbor probably requested that Mr. Herbert read this into the record, so that it would be part of the record of the proceedings. And in turn, the neighbor's probably not going to show up tonight, as long as that was read in, but
I just don't understand how that's any different from any other letter that's presented to us from a neighbor.
You, you can disregard it in terms of hearsay support or not, the notion is they didn't show up to object as long as this was being read in. Essentially, as I understand it, it's almost like the Appkin agreeing that they were going to do these things to satisfy the neighbor. But I'm sorry, Mr. Herbert, I jumped into your
No, you, this is why you've got one of the better land use attorneys representing your board, Mr. Irene.
It's a fair question, it's a fair question, because normally, normally, when we get a letter of support from a neighbor, the standard canned response is, it's hearsay unless somebody's here to testify before the board, and that was a very fair question.
And board members, if, if I could, I also represent several zoning and planning boards, I make the same ruling, but I was requested by the Coles that this be read into the record at the beginning of this application, and I was carrying out the, I was carrying out their wishes before the board.
Thank you.
Mr. Herbert, when, when was that agreement signed?
July 8.
And, you know, rather than, rather than having you summarize it, I think it would have been appropriate if the members of the board had a copy of that in advance of the meeting so that we could review it.
Sure, that, that, then my apologies on that, I wasn't sure if it was going to be allowed in or not, so I probably should have submitted it, but I can, I can send it right in and make sure it's part of the record. So my apologies, it wasn't in before that.
And I want to be, I want to be clear to the board members, okay? You, you can disregard statements as to who's in favor and who's against, because that's hearsay. But you have had situations where Appkins appeared in front of us seeking relief, and a, the Appkins attorney has candidly advised the board, listen, we had discussions with the neighbor, and we agreed that we were going to do such and such as part of our proposal, almost akin to putting a condition on, on the application or on the approval. Now, whether or not you see fit to roll those into the board's conditions is something that's up to you, if in fact you grant the, the relief. If you don't grant the relief, it doesn't matter. But no different than an Appkins attorney standing before you and saying, listen, we've agreed to move something two feet, one way or another, in our discussions with the neighbor. Or we've agreed to reduce the height by two feet, or we've agreed to put in a row of arboida as a buffer, and we've agreed to put that on the record, so you would know we reached that agreement, we're stipulating to do that as a result of our discussion with the neighbor. You follow?
Do.
So, Mr. Irene, does that mean that the board has the option, if it does grant the relief being sought tonight, to actually incorporate the terms of the agreement into the board resolution approving the request for the variances?
As I understand it, Mr. Herbert is essentially stipulating on behalf of the applicant that the Appkin either has done or will do each of these items, if in fact the relief is granted. So if the relief is granted, you can require as a condition that they do the items they stipulated that they had done or will do, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Your floor, Mr. Herbert, continue please, thank you very much.
Chairman, and I apologize if there was any confusion in the beginning of this, I, I would have been more specific with regard to how the letter was coming in at the beginning, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear. So, the applicant has recently made certain adjustments to the variance plan in response to input from the township's professionals and the Katie's neighbors, which Mr. Jensen will describe. The Katie seek to extend the permitted impervious lot coverage, various stormwater management techniques will be employed, including a decorative trench, drywells, and a recharge system, as will be described by our engineer, Mr. Jensen. Either Ms., Mr. Ossio or Ms. Corfone will describe as our planner the purposes of the proposal from a planning perspective. They will explain how the purpose of this land use law will be advanced by this proposal, which I had previously stated incorporates design elements to ensure stormwater is managed appropriately, and will explain how the variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or the public if borough zone playing out. Mr. Katie has done his due diligence here, he has reached out to all of his neighbors as we discussed before, and we discussed the agreement with the one neighbor. He is already, as I said before, he's already installed the extensive landscaping to ensure a complete buffer between properties, and modify the proposal for the patio to incorporate the bluestone design. And with regard to the variances that we will be asking for, they include maximum lot coverage, where a maximum lot coverage in the R30 zone is 30%, and there was a 29.9 existing, and we're looking for 41.2% is proposed. The, we were also asking for maximum frontage, lots with less than 150 feet of frontage are permitted, maximum number, number one, I'm sorry, one driveway, and that's what we're looking for is a bulk variance for two, two driveway openings. Also, in a single-family district, driveways and walkways may be no more than 25% of the front yard, here we're requesting 42%. So with that, I would like to introduce my clients, Mr. and Mrs. Katie. I guess, Mr. Irene, I guess we'll just have Mr. Katie testify at this point, but Mrs. Katie is available for any questions. So if you want to swear both in?
Hey, Mr. Mr. Katie, if you'd raise your right hand, please, Mr. Irene, first, give us your full name, spell your last and your address for the record, please.
It's James L. Cady, C-A-D-Y, 137 Grange Avenue, Fair Haven, New Jersey, 7704.
And you do swear testimony to give the board to be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Do you want, also want Do you also want to swear, Mrs. Katie, Mr. Herbert, or do you want to defer on that for now?
We can defer on that now. If questions arise, we can always swear her in later on.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Katie, if you could just introduce yourself to the board and explain what we're doing here.
Okay, fantastic. Well, you stole a lot of what I was going to say, so I'll keep it short. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for considering, you know, our application. It means a lot to our family. I'm Jim Katie, this is my wife Stephanie. We were both born and raised in Fairhaven. Both of us have been very active in the community. You know, so much so that, you know, we moved back here almost twenty years ago to raise our children here. You know, if you ever go vote, you might see her dad, Mike Vicaro, a long time, you know, official voting official. And if you've ever gone to the the plant cells, you you might probably have run into Linda Vicaro. She's a longtime garden club member and and they've both been on the shade tree commission as well. I I tell you this because, you know, we have very deep roots and a long history in Fairhaven. You know, we love this town. We chose to raise our family here. You know, so so we bought a house over on Princeton. And as our family did grow, we we really wanted to have a pool. So I mean, anybody who was growing up in Fairhaven, Sandy, maybe, you know, Grange is is an optimal place to live. So, you know, that's where we really desired to move. And we wanted a pool for our family to enjoy. So we we, you know, about five years ago, we started looking around for properties that would would fit that bill. And, you know, we were lucky enough to find one thirty seven Grange, which we actually looked at back in two thousand and ten before it was rebuilt by Costas and Denise Naxis. You know, and, you know, we talked to them and they were willing to sell their house. So we were really excited about that. And, you know, coming from Princeton, where there were actually putting pools on hundred or seventy five by one fifty lots. We really didn't, you know, think it was an issue. I probably should have done my homework a little earlier and done it on. But unfortunately, after we were out of attorney review, we came to realize that the property was was currently at thirty nine percent, you know. And then we also came to find that our circular driveway was not compliant to code, which was a bit shocking to us because when we did look back at the house and growing up here, I there was a circular driveway always on this property. So that wasn't ever a concern of ours. So then, you know, Michael went into, you know, the situation. But we went to work with our engineers and people we knew in town. And everybody felt pretty confident that we could, you know, present a pretty solid plan that made sense for everybody. And, you know, we we were desiring to to basically just install the pool and keep our driveway. As Mike had mentioned, you know, I mean, pretty much all of our neighbors, I can say, were fully supportive of our plans. We did have the one neighbor to our south side.
Mr. Katie, this is where this is where Mr. Chivetti is going to tell me that I have to tell you that that's hearsay. And it is.
Okay, okay, no problems. They, okay, so.
But but good try, good try, nevertheless.
So so we, so anyway, months went on and and the time dragged into two thousand and twenty. And and we we were basically confronted with the decision that we we'd lost one summer already without the pool. You know, we we our boys weren't getting any younger. And, you know, we felt at that time we needed to make a decision, you know, in the best, a difficult decision in the best interest of our family. So considering everything, we made the decision to become fully compliant and eliminate our driveway and install the pool. So, you know, so our family could enjoy it. And I'm thankful to say that it was probably a great decision because we had a wonderful summer. You know, our daughter had a really hard time with COVID. So, sorry. But anyway, so we did install a small pool. We then went on and we planted extensive landscaping. We spent well over forty five thousand dollars. We played, we planted over eighty specimen trees and bushes, including skip laurels, giant green arbor vitias. We planted eight additional trees, as Mike had mentioned. We we put another maple as well. Then we just planted another as part of the agreement, you know, with the calls. And, you know, this significantly improved the all overall appearance of the yard and and as well as providing a significant amount of privacy between the two properties. We also took great measures to contain any runoff to our property that may be present. We built a berm up between the two properties. You know, and 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 Michael expressed this and I expressed this because we felt it was important that, you know, why we did what we did because we were, I think in two thousand and nineteen, we were came to you with the original plans to do this. But as time went on and things changed and with COVID and everything, you know, we 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 made the decision. And and so now we're here with before you and we're we're proposing plans that would allow us to reinstall our circular driveway. We really feel that it would provide added safety to the neighborhood because we would be able to drive out facing forward versus backing out. We have one young driver, seventeen years old. We have another one coming up. And we've we've come to find as adults even and and veteran drivers that it's become a bit of an issue backing out. So it would it would really be, you know, helpful if we were able to pull out facing forward and especially with the foot traffic on the street. Another thing, and I know I can't talk about the neighbors, but, you know, you know, it it would also keep our cars parked on our property versus having to continually park cars on the streets, which I would believe our neighbors would be happy about, especially across the street. But I can't say for sure, of course. But, you know, and also one thing I think is important, it would significantly improve the curb appeal for the neighborhood's benefit by having a circular driveway. The old house had it, and when this house was built, it also had it. And it just looked good. And we're planning to enhance that greatly by putting, you know, Belgium block around. We'd like to install some real nice pillars and and just make the property look better. So, you know, with that, if it's at all possible, we'd ask that you guys, you know, if you could look at our plans in their entirety, maybe when making the decision with the driveway and the pool together as initially intended. And we're hopefully that, you know, once Bill explains everything, that you'll see that the changes that we're proposing will be both beneficial to the neighborhood on many levels and be consistent with what the variances in Fairhaven are in place for. So, again, thank you very much for your consideration. We very much appreciate it. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Michael.
Thanks, Mr. Katie. I just I just have a question. And I remember when your original application for the pool came in. Well, was it really two years ago? And and I guess just the thing I I have always been struggling when I saw this driveway come back is why, what what was the reasoning that you didn't go for the pool variance in the beginning? And that and I know the old house that was there before Costas built that. I used to live there and the 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 old white house that was there with the gravel circular driveway. Why not go for the variance for the pool and leave the driveway as is? It just comes across as a little bit, I hate to say it, but backhanded of, well, we'll do this and put the pool in and then go and put the driveway back. I'm just curious about why that was was withdrawn.
I completely understand. Well, we we tried to work things out with the neighbors. And we literally were going back and forth for for over months. I mean, almost nine months trying to appease them. It was told to us, whether it was correct or not, that if we came before you and you said no, that we wouldn't, we we would, you know, be no, and we'd never have an opportunity to get the pool.
It would have to be substantially different, yeah.
Exactly. So so, you know, now we're into COVID. We already lost one summer. We we frankly, we didn't feel like we were going to come to an agreement with them because the 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 demands kept coming and and we drew everything up. And then they come back with more and then we draw it up again and we come back with more. And I mean, we were into this for, you know, thousand, tens of thousands of dollars. And then then COVID hit. So, you know, we 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 came to the pretty the conclusion that we weren't going to be able to come to an agreement. And, you know, with them and we we made the decision, all right, especially during COVID, like, what's more important to us? Is it is it the pool or is it the the driveway? You know, because we did not want to lose another summer without the pool, especially with our daughter and and our family. So we we made that decision and and, you know, you know, we did it willingly. But, you know, so we're here, we're here asking for it. But that's that's the reason as best I can explain it is is we didn't feel like we were going to come to an agreement. And thankfully, we ultimately did. So so we do have an agreement now. So that's fantastic. And, you know, so so but that's that's the best way I can answer it for you.
Were you able to build your pool without asking for any variances?
Yes, we went fully compliant, you know, because on our side, I'm sorry.
Did you have to take out the circular driveway that was there in order to get the pool in with no variances?
Yes.
Is that how it worked?
That's exactly how it
Because you were prioritizing the pool. You sort of put the circular driveway issue on the back burner pending a possible agreement with your neighbors.
Yes, we
That puts into perspective the sort of piecemeal approach that you adopted. Because if you had to give up one of them, you were going to give up the circular driveway.
That's correct. That's correct.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Mr. Katie, are you looking at the circular driveway as alternative parking in front of your house? That it's is that what that was that what that is designed for?
Well, we currently have three cars in our household now. So it would allow us to, for instance, we could park one car in the front if needed. If one of us was leaving, it also allows us, you know, when we back up, we can pull back around and go out front. I don't think we're going to be really parking cars out there like that's where we're going to park. But most of our car, our two cars are always parked in the back. We park three cars in the back now. But for instance, if my son were to come home late, you know, or I were to come home, it would just allow us to to turn around and or drive out. But as far as parking the cars in the front, you know, I there would be one maybe. But I don't anticipate that we would be parking out there continually because everybody likes to go in the back door.
And Mr. Katie, do you have room for a K turn in the back part of your property by the garage?
No, not at all, not at all.
On that note, thank you, Mr. Alfred, for bringing that up. On that note, have you considered adding an adding an area to allow a K turn rather than put the full circular driveway back in the front, which would take up much less of the front yard and 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 much less impervious coverage?
Well, I'll allow Bill to address that because we talked about that. And the reality is, you know, with two new drivers trying to 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 get them to do a K turn, the reality is there probably would be a car parked there if we had the the K turn option. And but I'll allow Bill to explain that we really didn't see that we were losing or adding that much in lot coverage, you know, to do that. If you have the circular driveway, it allows you to 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 back out and then turn and then go out front ways, or it allows you to back out and then go around the circle. So it's much, you know, hey, aesthetically, I think the circular driveway looks much better.
Absolutely. There's no, there's no
And I mean, but as far as we we did discuss that. But I think Bill, my my engineer, would be much better at, you know, describing why we feel a circular driveway would make much more sense.
But again, Mr. Katie, just emphasize you you want to keep that driveway as clear as you can so that your team drivers can pull out headfirst using the the newer part of the driveway if if approved.
Absolutely. That that's the main reason as it was before.
So parking parking a car there all the time would defeat the purpose, would it not?
Yeah, well, I mean, you can park a car if you were in the circle, you can
But we want to, we want to keep that as clear as possible so that your son can pull his car out of it.
Yeah, well, if you had a K turn, though, what would happen is you'd have you would have a car there and you wouldn't really be able to back out through the K turn now. But if you had a circular driveway, you'd actually be able to pull the car up in front of the house. And then you'd have enough room to do a K turn and actually pull out, you know. So everybody would be allowed to pull out facing forward one hundred percent of the time if we were able to have the circular driveway. And that's been our experience. I mean, we had a circular driveway in there for a year and a half. We moved in that way and it was a preexisting condition. And and we loved it. And, you know, I don't, I don't really think we ever really parked at night or or, you know, at length during the day out there on a regular basis. But it would allow us now what we have to do is we have to back one car out, park it on the street. We may or may not get another, thankfully, our my our son's going to school. And so we're probably just going to have one car, extra car, so we'll have three cars. But we have to continually park it out on the street. And when we park it out on the street, it's directly across from, you know, from the driveway across the street. And they have new drivers, too. And, you know, I is this hearsay if I explain my conversation with them? Can I?
Pretty much.
It's okay. Well, the the cars parked directly in front of their driveway, which they have to back out of. So, you know, so that that's where it is. And then there's another one, right, you know, at the other side, so.
And that driveway, the existing one, the one that you put in to replace the circular, the the long single driveway, that is not wide enough to put two cars side by side in?
At the very end by the garage, it is. It's only wide enough now for a single car to back out of. You cannot park, you you could not do that now, now, as it is.
I guess I guess one of the things that keeps coming into my mind, and and you're not the first person that we've got a circular driveway issue with, is that and and maybe I'm, I don't want to speak for the board, obviously, but Grange has been very recently purported in some other business in town as being not a very busy street. And the contention that, you know, there's a lot of traffic on Grange kind of goes against the argument. We've had a different case on Fairhaven Road, which was which was denied for a circular driveway. And that is a very busy road. Not saying that that, you know, there isn't traffic and new drivers. I have one of my own. But something to bear in mind.
Well, I'm sorry. I I would say that on the north side of the end of our driveway, our neighbors have a very big hedge row. And I I literally almost, you know, there there's a lot of, there's a lot of
Well, that is another issue. I'll agree with that. Sight lines are
Yeah, there is a lot of foot traffic. There's a lot of people walking their babies. There's a lot of people on bicycles. There's 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 dogs. So there's a lot of foot traffic. And and that that actually is a bigger concern than any. I I didn't really, I know there's not a lot of, we moved down here because there is no, you know, traffic. You know, and again, I'll leave it to Bill, you know, to to hopefully explain we're not too far off on the hundred twenty five foot.
So that's the other question I had. Guys, could somebody refresh my memory? What's the frontage, minimum frontage for two cuts? Is it one fifty or one? How far off are we? Ms. Gable, do you know?
One fifty.
No, no, one, no.
One twenty five.
One twenty five.
Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Katie, is the installation of two pillars out in front? It seems like you're worried about your sight lines, but isn't that going to be contradicting your sight lines if you have two two stone pillars out in front of your of both sides of your driveway?
Well, they're going to be, they're going to be that, you know, inset. And if we were able to pull out forward, absolutely not. And they're only they're only five foot pillars. So the 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 house right across the street has a circular driveway, just like ours with the pillars. And, you know, it doesn't seem to be an issue there. They're more decorative than anything else for us. I mean, you know.
Now that you brought this up, the numbers just got conflated here. I'm concerned that some numbers just got conflated here. I think the it's one twenty five. It's actually the frontage requirement. Is the requirement for the two driveway cuts?
Yeah, that's the question I had, Mr. Chivetti, is what's the minimum, minimum for two driveway cuts is one fifty, not one twenty five? One twenty five minimum frontage for the lot in the zone.
Correct.
And assuming that you assuming that you have a a stone pillar out front, you've got a tree in the front yard, a big, beautiful tree. And I I heard, you know, Mr. Herbert say that that tree is going to be left intact. You've got between your driveway and the tree is only five feet. How how big a pillar? Most of the pillars in the neighborhood are at least three feet. So you're going to encroach within two feet of the trunk of that tree with your pillar. How are you going to keep that tree alive if indeed you're you're trying to preserve it?
Lose the pillars?
I don't know what to say. I I I there the pillars, as I understand it, are going to be set back like, and again, I think that's more for our engineer, but the pillars are going to be set back like ten feet. I don't know how far down you would actually have to go to, you know, support pillars. I'm not familiar with that.
There you go, below the frost line. But and I know, Ms. Gable, I think she flagged this in her report. Guys, did were were the area of those pillars included in your lot coverage numbers? in your lot coverage numbers?
Uh, yes, Mr. Jensen will testify to that, but yes, they will.
Okay, thank you.
So I have the number from the ordinance for the number of curb cuts. It's one fifty.
Yeah.
More than one fifty feet, but less than eight hundred. You can have two driveways.
Right.
Great, thanks, thanks, Ms. Katie. Okay, any more, Mr. Katie? Anybody have any questions of Mr. Katie? Any further? Great. Thanks very much, Mr. Katie. Appreciate your um, your candor and your testimony. It's informative.
Mr. Nachesney, how do you want to do it with opening to the public? Do you want to open to the public for questions and comments all at the end, or do you want to do it as we go?
No, we're probably doing as we go, given that there's a number of professionals. I think we should just go in each in order. So if, I think we open it up public now for questions for Mr. Katie would probably be a good idea.
So Sandy, we're going to now announce that if there are interested parties that wish to question Mr. Katie on his testimony, they can let you know by raising their hand or whatever they need to do to signal to you. There will be an opportunity at the end when all the applicants witnesses have testified for any interested parties to make comments or give their own testimony on the application. Right now, we're soliciting questions from any interested parties of Mr. Katie with regard to his testimony. Anyone? Let the record reflect no response. Mr. Herbert, your next witness?
Oh, yes, uh, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Irene, my next witness is our engineer, uh, Mr. Jensen.
Mr. Jensen, if you'd give us your full name, spell your last and your address for the record, please.
Sure, it's William E. Jensen, Jr., J E N S E N. Uh, my office address is two one five zero, Route thirty-five. Suite two fifty, Seagurt, New Jersey.
And I'm going to swear in if you'd raise your right hand. You just swear in a testimony, give the board, it'll be the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you. Do you want to go through Mr. Jensen's qualifications, Mr. Herbert?
Yes, Mr. Irene, thank you. Mr. Jensen, by who are you employed and what capacity?
Sure, um, I'm the owner at Jensen Design Group. Um, I'm a professional engineer licensed in New Jersey. I graduated from Clemson University with a bachelor's science in civil engineering. Uh, I've testified through various boards through New Jersey over my career, um, and prepare, was involved in preparing this plan and other plans like this throughout New Jersey.
Thank you. Uh, I offer Mr. Jensen as an expert in engineering, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jensen, how long have you been licensed as professional engineer in state New Jersey?
Uh, since two thousand four.
Two thousand four?
I graduated Clemson in ninety-seven.
Okay, have your credentials ever been rejected by the Superior Court of State, New Jersey, or are any land use board in the state, New Jersey?
No.
Mr. Vice Chairman, will we accept Mr. Jensen?
Yes, I'm good with that.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mr. Irene. Okay, Mr. Jensen, uh, what uh, we want to put an exhibit up, which exhibit do you want to put up to explain the uh, property and the proposed development?
Sure, I could share my screen. Um, I think we might want to call this A six. It's just good, it's just a clear cleared rendering of the project, so it's a little clearer for everybody to see.
So, A seven?
Okay, A seven.
So A seven is a rendering of what we've marked as exhibit A dash five?
Correct.
Is that right?
It's cleaned, it's cleaned up, yes.
So, yeah, it it it, yeah, it's a, it's a clarified A five.
And it's, you want a date on it at all?
Is it dated?
It's dated, uh, eight nineteen twenty-one.
Okay, and we we don't have this yet, is that right?
Uh, I think it, I'm not a hundred percent sure if it was submitted with the package, but it's 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 exactly the same as our design. Except that it just cleared, cleared up so everyone can see it.
Okay, so we'll just, we we obviously have to preserve it for our record. We're going to have to.
Yeah, I could send it to the board.
Excellent, thank you.
Um, is it okay to share my screen?
Yes, please.
There it is.
Yeah.
Um, so I'll just go, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to just to go through, uh, just quickly, like the the property, the existing conditions, what we're proposing, and they kind of go through some some notes, and then I could take some questions to answer anyone's comments. So I think that'll answer some of the stuff in the the board's uh, review letter. And uh, any comments some of the board members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen, please proceed.
Sure. So as as everybody knows, this is block twenty-two, lot fifty-three in the borough of Fairhaven. Uh, it's located along Grange Avenue. It's actually located in the R thirty zone, uh, contains twenty-two thousand five hundred thirteen square feet. It's surrounded by residential properties in the R fifteen zone to the east and R thirty zone to the north, south and west. Uh, the the existing conditions, uh, we have the dwelling in the center, a detached garage in the back right of the property with the proposing, uh, the existing in-ground pool. Uh, the existing gravel driveway goes from the detached garage out to the front of the property. Uh, there's a pool compliant fence that wasn't, that's also existing and the existing lot co- coverage is twenty-nine point nine eight, which as it exists today meets the re- requirements, the ordinance. And the front yard coverage also meets the requirements. It's fourteen point six percent. So as we discussed before, we're proposing to no changes to the structures on the property. Uh, we're adding, if you could look at the screen, we're adding a rear yard patio, which after re- um, reading the comments from the professionals, uh, the client decided to change it to the blue stone, uh, blue stepping stone patio with the grass in between to allow drainage or runoff to recharge back in the ground. We're also proposing to create that circular driveway that we were talking about in pretty much the same location as it existed when the our clients, the Katie's, uh, purchased the property and they moved in. The as we discussed, the main reason is to eliminate the backup maneuver uh, currently required to reduce the conflicts with other vehicles, pedestrians, bicyclists. Um, and to help the the family just with a safer time to back out, so they don't have to back out, they can back up and then pull around the circular driveway. Um, additionally, this allows for guests to not have to park in the the street. They, when they come, they can come into the driveway, pull down the circular driveway to help eliminate any conflicts with the neighbor across the street as their driveway is located directly where anyone would have to park in the street. Uh, the four pillars that we were talking about are up at the front of the property. They're actually approximately ten to eleven feet from the curb line. Uh, one of the board members mentioned that, uh, the existing tree that's locating a- along uh, Grange Avenue there. I don't know if you can see my cursor with the hand symbol, but the tree is located right on the curb line. I could show, um, I could show a Google map view to show what it looks like, but it's like growing on the curb line there. So the installation of the pillars would not impact the health of the tree, in my opinion. Um, the lot coverage allowed, we know is thirty percent max. The project is proposing forty-one point nine seven percent, which would require variance. The allowable front yard coverage is twenty-five percent, where the proposed coverage is forty-two point two, where which also requires a variance. And one driveway, as was discussed, does require a hundred fifty foot of frontage where we are less than that for for two driveways. Um, just a little discussion about the project, uh, the entire exist, existing stone driveways to be removed and replaced with a new stone driveway with decorative uh, block border, which was all included, all the stone area in the block border of the driveway was included in the coverage calculations. So if the driveway is paved or stoned, it was still included in the calculations. Existing front walkway to the front covered porch would be removed and replaced as shown. That would be up in this area. And we propose the stormwater collection system along the the entrances of both driveways. It'd be a decorative trench drain. And would be collected and piped to a recharge system uh, in the center front of the property. Now, we we didn't design it yet, uh, we just wanted to get clarification if if this was good to approve, we would design it per per the requirements of the board engineer or the town engineer. Um, it should, we also wanted to note that sorry, I just wanted to figure where it was. Um, the system would be designed to contain the increased area over the thirty percent, which is eleven point nine seven percent. Um, it should be noted that when the clients, um, our clients purchase the property, that the roof leaders for the dwelling and detached garage are already captured into a underground recharge system as uh, the case described to our office. Um, as I described, indicated before, the original design we had was to have a full patio that was all concrete for this whole area. And as recommended by the board professionals, uh, the client decided to change that patio to a pay, uh, stepping stone, blue, blue stepping stone patio that allows for six-inch gaps of grass in between all the stones to allow uh, stormwater to recharge back into the ground. Um.
And and Mr. Jensen, there was a uh, comment made in the higher rule memorandum uh, for uh, September uh, third, whether or not we could use paver, uh, we use porous uh, stones for that back patio. Can you just comment on that?
Sure, as you, instead you is our intention is the purvi- uh, porous pervious pavers, um, they have the opportunity to get clogged with any sand and debris or anything. It's my professional opinion that the stepping stones with six-inch gap of grass in there provides a more better benefit and less opportunity to fail for any recharge back into the ground. So that's why we propose this type of of design, and it looks a little better also. Another, uh, another issue that was brought up was, um, there is the back area by the garage. There will be eight hundred and forty square feet of the the driveway will be paved. Uh, there was a drafting area. We fixed it on this plan, but the original plan did not show that.
Um, Mr. Jensen, where it says stone driveway, so the plan is not for stone, it's for for asphalt then, is that correct?
Correct. So I don't know if everyone could see my cursor, but yeah, by the garage where it says stone driveway, there's a solid line here. That's where the asphalt would stop. And the rest would be the gravel stone.
Okay.
That doesn't, that does not change the coverage calculation, is that right?
Correct. So the entire driveway, um, paved, pavers, gravel, all are considered impervious and by the ordinance. So that's how we, uh, that's how the the project was designed to include that.
Thank you.
Uh, there was also a a question about the three hundred foot buffer. Uh, the project is well outside the three hundred foot from the Navisink River. And uh, should not require any cat for issues. Um, the the project, it's anticipated it's going to be less than five thousand square feet, so uh, real soil permit, uh, they they actually have a a waiver that would be issued during construction if it's approved. Um, that would be granted by them, that we would submit to our permit. And I believe, um, I believe that should answer all the questions, but I could answer any other questions that come up.
Uh, just, uh, Bill, can you just talk about the stormwater management issues? Will, uh, will we be exacerbating any stormwater issues out there?
So with the the way, the the way we're designing the project, we're going to be collecting and improving, uh, this, the condition that currently exists. So the entire driveway area will be directed to these recharge system, the these trench trains at the dri- driveway entrances uh, on our property and collected into the drainage system. So be improving the condition that currently exists. You, um, and help improve it when you're including the circular driveway. But the condition that currently exists doesn't include all of that driveway, includes grass there. So how do you improve on it, just recharging into the ground? Well, because even even though there it's grass, there's still a percentage that actually does run off. So this will give the opportunity to collect the water that's running off of the the gravel. And for even the area that was grass that would eventually hit the road would now be co- collected into this system before it goes into a road. I understand your point that a certain percentage of the grass will recharge in the ground until it gets saturated, then it will start overflowing.
And it, I'm sorry. Uh, and Bill, uh, on landscaping, there's substantial landscape that has been added to the site, is that correct, and and will be?
Correct. As Mr. Katie was explaining, the majority of the landscaping was on the southern property line with the with the neighbor. Um, where they were putting landscaping and screening, um, as a part of the their their agreement.
And, um, again, let's, let's just focus on the driveway.
Sorry.
Skip, you're breaking up. Mr. Jensen, I I I have a question for you. Are you saying that the uh, that the maximum lot coverage is indeed twenty-nine point nine eight percent? Uh, measuring it by the way that Fairhaven calculates their their lot coverage. I mean, is that what you're certifying based on your um, uh, on your plans?
Yeah, the the existing condition, not not to propose, the existing condition.
Yes, that that you're certifying that the existing condition is indeed below the uh, maximum lot area coverage.
Correct. Well, it's it's by like, yes, it's right at, right below it, correct, the thirty percent alone.
Thank you. Okay, and uh, Mr. Jensen, if you just again review with the board, I know we've talked about it a couple of times, but the safety factors with regard to the the circular driveway.
Sure, but by having the circular driveway, you uh, almost eliminate every backup movement onto the, onto Grange Avenue. Because everybody could back up and then pull through the driveway and exit the driveway um, with the driver's seat closer to the to the street line to see left and right for any pedestrians, bicyclists, or other vehicles coming down the street. When you back out, obviously, the driver's point of view is farther away from the intersection. It's harder to see, especially with vegetation um, on the neighbors neighboring property to the north.
And, um, I I know that, um, we we talked about whether an alternative for a K-turn driveway uh, could be used here. Could you just talk about that as opposed to the circular driveway?
Sure. So when we looked at the the K-turn uh, driveway option, uh, it would be, hopefully everyone can see my cursor, it would be up in this area here. And when we added that option in, um, it would make the the front less inviting, but also it would only reduce the coverage by six hundred and seventy-four square feet by eliminating this this portion of the the stone driveway. So to, and to create the area for somebody to pull, we were, when we were doing the K drop, K-turn area, we're trying to anticipate somebody parking there and still be, you know, have another area for somebody to come out and pull, pull out. So the area that it would take up in the front would only be six hundred and seventy-four square feet less than what's proposed today. Or what we're proposing right now.
Okay, and I think we've touched on the higher rule memo, September memo. I am just looking at the last two pages. We talked about the K-turn, the pervious uh, pavement stones. Uh, we'll be going into the legal basis for granting variances with Mr. Ocello, our planner. Uh, but, uh, again, we talked about, uh, the safety factors with the driveway. Um, and uh, whether NJDEP CAFRA applies here. I think, uh, we touched upon all that. Is that correct, Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, we are agreeing that any changes that are requested by the board professionals to the plans or any other, uh, uh, engineering needs to be done for the site that we will, we will go ahead and do it, is that correct?
Correct.
I have a question, if that's all right.
Sure.
Um, you did say that the the proposed stone pillars are included in the impervious cap, coverage calculations because I don't see them included in the detail that was submitted.
Yeah, I bu- I believe there, we will, we will clear that up and it will be included. Um, I'm pretty sure that was included with the driveway and the curbing, but I will check that. And my, there are two by two, I believe, pillars, so. And my, there are two by two, I believe, pillars, so we would modify it if it turns out that it's not.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Jensen, could you clarify, uh, your listing as being removed, uh, impervious coverage when you get to the new, um. Impervious calculation?
Oh, oh, the, the part of the driveway that would be removed?
Yeah, I think you list, uh, removing some pavers and a portion of the driveway.
Sure.
This is a good time to put your exhibit back up.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it up right now.
Thank you.
Okay, could everybody see that right now?
Yes.
So the exi, the existing area that's going to be coming out is the existing driveway that runs this entire length. All the way up to the, to the back garage. And then along. The sides of the existing driveway that comes through here. And also the pavers that were coming out, there's a, the front entrance is like a flared area. That's coming into the, that's just out opening to the grass and we were gonna remove that and make it square. To tie right into the proposed driveway. So it's a small area of pavers here and then the whole. Back area, I mean, the whole driveway area that would be coming out, the existing driveway.
I'm sorry, you're not saying you're removing the whole driveway that leads now to the garage, are you?
Uh, the whole, the entire, the, yes, the entire existing driveway will be coming out and they'll be putting a new driveway with a decorative border, you see the, the line. That goes along the edges of the driveways, the decorative board.
Okay.
Yeah. The only, the only difference is the area back here, that's not shown as a stone, this would be paved.
Um, is there any room to try to decrease some of the impervious coverage in the front yard? Still be replacing it all anyway?
If they, it depends on if, um. Like narrowing the driveway, some would, would be able to eliminate some of it. But other than that. The driveway that we've shown, that we show is like the minimal. Of the imperious in the front that would be changed. So. Like if we, if we reduce the driveway down to a ten foot wide driveway. We would eliminate approximately like four hundred and twenty square feet of impervious.
How many points is that on?
That's for the entire driveway.
How many points this, how many points does that equate to, Mr. Jensen, do you know?
Uh, sure, if you could hold on just one second. It's about one point, one point eight six percent.
Thank you.
Sure.
Is that just in the front yard or is that for the total impervious?
That would be the, for the entire driveway, we reduced the sides down to ten feet.
Yeah, I was playing with that number about, with the, um, the bluestone patio saying, you know, would you? Uh, eliminate the bluestone patio and just have grass there, and I realized it's like one percent and it's, you know, i- i- it's. Minimal, it's minimal. One, one, one and a half, something like that.
I mean, the main reason for the patio in the back was so they can have a place to put lawn chairs, um, just out there by the pool, cause right now it's. We show an aerial, it's just a pool, it's all grassed around it.
No, that's fair enough, but when you're, when you're looking at a number that is, you know.
Right.
Above what's allowed, you, you, you know, you, you look for any little area that you can to reduce that number.
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Jensen.
Sure.
How long have you been working on this project?
So I, I was involved with it in the beginning when the pool, so around two years, like Mr. Katie described before.
Okay, so you were involved in figuring out what to cut out in order to bring. The coverage number under. The requirement so that they get their. Zoning and building permits originally for the pool?
Uh, correct, we talked as it over as a team with the landscaper, the owner, with the Kates and myself, yes.
And, um, you gave a little bit of testimony as to sort of the traffic engineering. Benefits of the two curb cuts, could you tell me what you suppose the traffic engineering? Basis for. An ordinance to require hundred and fifty feet of frontage. Before you're allowed to have two curb cuts and, and why your solution is better than that?
I, I can always say in my opinion would be that on a very heavily traveled roadways. You're trying to eliminate multiple access points for very, like in commercial areas. Where there's gonna be a high volume.
In a, in a mainly residential town and applies to. All zones, so.
Not, I understand.
But so you think that.
That would be my.
And it, and it shouldn't apply to this because it's residential. And it's not a busy street.
I think that's the, the case that we're trying to explain is that. The safety aspect of this from backing out with the, the. Residential pedestrian and bicyclists. Areas is a benefit in having to have the two driveways over the wall.
Can you use your cursor to show me on the document that you're sharing? Where the line is that you took to show the extent of the front yard? When you calculated the front yard area?
Yes. So I, we took straight off. Uh, the covered porch, straight to the pop, property lines. All the way to the front property line. So this area right here.
And I'm curious also about the bluestone pavers in the back, where you're gonna have. Six inches of grass in between all of them?
Yes.
How, how are they gonna be laid in, in such a way that they're not going to? Shift all over the place, I mean, is that all, is that entire area gonna be compacted, sown dust, and they'll lay the? The bluestone on top of it and then plant grass in between?
Typically. Uh, typically the, the designs that we see when they already have the grass area in there. They lay out the area where the bluestones are gonna go, cut that out, put, uh. The base materials you're talking about, uh, underneath the areas of the stone instead of digging everything up.
Okay.
Just sort of minimize, so we're, we're not gonna, you know, rip it all up and then keep an area, I understand where you're coming from, like trying to. Compact the base to where the runoff can't get through, that's not our intention.
So how are you gonna prevent those bluestones from moving around if you're not gonna compact the base?
Compact the base underneath each bluestone, uh, they're trying to, they cut out the areas for the bluestone.
So they're gonna cut out the area under each individual bluestone and compact the base under each individual bluestone?
We would try and recommend that to the landscaper, yes, to minimize disturbance on the property and everything, yes.
Wow, that sounds expensive, but okay.
Mr. Irene, can I, I ask Mr. Gardella to weigh in on the. Yes, yes, you can, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Okay, great. I can do what I want, yeah.
You can do pretty much what you like.
I just, uh, I just think it's timely and, and rather than wait till, till Mr. Jensen's finished, I want, wanna get some questions. Rich, can you give us some input on the, um, stormwater management with the new recharge system in the front that has yet to be designed? Is this something that, that can handle, uh, the amount of, of water that we're talking about without? And I've seen this in some new construction projects, uh, in, on streets that I won't name. Where, that have water popping up, uh, on property, but then diverting it off property, which, which kind of. Defeats the purpose, uh, is this, do you, do you think in your professional opinion that this is something that can be managed?
Yes, um, so what they're proposing is a recharge area in the front here. And then the trench drains will intercept any flow coming down the driveway. Before it flows out into Grange Avenue. And their engineer explained that those trench drains will then be piped into this recharge system. And then ultimately recharge back into the ground. And the only thing I wanna point out too is the grade on this property. Uh, from my standpoint is very minimal, there's a minimal pitch, you have maybe. A foot or so from the front of the structure out to the street. So you don't have a steep lot, you don't have much velocity or, or sheet flow. And the other thing we need to remember is this driveway did once, uh, exist, you know, this was a pre-existing condition and. For a long time and as the borough engineer and also, uh, director of public works. We haven't had any issues out in Grange Avenue with any type of, uh, stormwater, uh, management problems.
Good, good, yeah. Twenty years ago when I moved here, it was, it was a stone gravel driveway with an old house there and then.
But I, I can also say that this type of system. Will definitely be a benefit. Uh, to this project and. It, it's, it's actually a little above and beyond, uh, what we normally would see. Um, normally they would show just the yard drain to try to capture some of the flow, in this case. They're looking to intercept all that runoff coming from the driveway at both driveways.
Okay, good.
I ask a follow-up question, Mr. Machesney?
Yeah, no, all yours.
So, Rich, what type of maintenance would typically be required on those trench drains to make sure that they're continuing to serve their design function? Not getting clogged up, whether it's from stone, leaves, debris, so on so forth?
Uh, typically, it's, uh, as needed, uh, maintenance by the, by the property owner. Uh, normally they get clogged with leaves during, you know, the time of years, the leaves start to fall into winter. During a spring cleanup, you know, you basically jet it with a hose or, or just simply clean it out. It's, it's nothing more than a trench drain. Maybe eight inches deep with a, with a grate, a removable grate on top. So, um. Pretty standard practice, uh, for homeowner. To maintain. So I, I don't see any concern with that.
Thank you, Rich.
Sure.
Hey, Rich. As, as the borough engineer, could you give us an idea what you believe the rationale behind? Requiring a hundred and fifty foot frontage for two curb cuts is?
Um, I think once again, it has to do with the type of street that, that it's proposed on, once again, it's an ordinance that is borough wide. In this particular case, um. You know, Grange Avenue is, I think, thirty to thirty-two feet in width. This particular property is towards the end of Grange Avenue. Grange Avenue is not a major collector, uh, like some of the other streets in town. And it basically just serves the residents that live in that neighborhood, so.
Well, isn't there, um. Pretty extensive foot and bicycle traffic there, people that don't live in the neighborhood and isn't that a major issue in town right now?
I think the, the, I wouldn't use the word extensive, I would just say that currently. Pedestrians and bicyclists utilize the roadway as well as vehicles, there are no sidewalks on Grange Avenue. Um. Yeah. It's not. It's not part of any project that I'm aware of.
Oh, is it not, Rich, sorry, I'm, maybe I confusing the hands.
And is there a, um. Is there a? Site triangle? Type of issue with, um. I guess hedgerows and things on the corner of a property. Coming up to a certain distance from either the property line or the. Or the curb. That was, the testimony was that there's an issue backing onto the street from this driveway. Because of a hedgerow on the neighbor's property that comes out. Quite far. Is there, does the borough require that a certain? Uh, site triangle be cleared at the end of a property? Would be clear of obstructions like a hedgerow?
I'm not aware of any ordinance for. Residential properties, but. Introducing this circular driveway and having that secondary access for. The homeowners to pull out of that property. Um. In my opinion, would only be a benefit than having them to back out and as Director here had mentioned.
Sent that a blast recently. With property maintenance standards for. Bushes and trees that overhang curb the street and that there was a site triangle. Part, portion to that as well, that, that's not correct or?
We'd have to go back and look to see if there's an ordinance, but if it's, if it's in property maintenance. Um, it was probably more of just a, an encouragement. To the residents to try to do their best to trim things back and maintain clear access.
Thanks, Rich.
Okay.
Do we know if there's a setback requirement for the driveway? Five feet, three feet, two feet, five feet, ten feet?
There are, Fairhaven does not have a setback requirement from a side property line.
Okay, thank you.
Funny, I, 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 I know the, uh, in the applicant's, uh, submission, they have pictures of two different houses, uh, addresses citing circular driveways. That, I remember when, well, at least one of them was built was new construction and that definitely is not a hundred and fifty foot wide and I'm trying to figure out how they, uh. The, the one that's won in from Cooney, how they put a circular driveway in there when it's probably only a hundred foot wide according to my very old tax map. But that's just an aside. Um, great, anybody have more, any questions for, for Mr. Gardella? No? Good, I guess at this point I'll ask if the public has any questions of the, of the borough engineer. I don't see any, great, appreciate, uh, your help, uh, Rich, uh, answered quite a bit for me there.
No problem.
Pete, are you gonna open to see if the public has questions of Mr. Jensen?
Uh, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna ask Mr. Jensen if he's finished yet, but, uh, Mr. Jensen, sorry to, for that aside there, but.
No problem at all, um, yeah, I'm open for any questions from the board or the public, yes.
And, and I've finished questioning the witness at this point, Mr. Chairman, so he is ready for the public.
Okay, great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Jensen? Nobody? Alright, then we'll open to the public, anybody in members of the public have any questions for the applicant's, uh, engineer? I don't have my hand thing open here, so I can't really see.
There's no one raising their hand.
No one raising their hand. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Jensen, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Herbert, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, on my list witness tonight is Justin Osceolo, he is from, uh, the Confone Consulting Group. Uh, Mr. Osceolo, can you, are you there, there you are, I see.
Yes, I'm here. Good evening.
Uh, good evening, um, and Mr. Osceolo, um, if you could, uh, present yourself to be sworn in by Mr. Irene.
So if you give us your full name, spell your last and your address to the record, please.
Justin Osceolo, and that's, uh, A U C I E L L O. And the address is, uh, one twenty-five, uh, Half Mile Road, Suite two hundred, Red Bank. So, the phone consulting group.
If you'd raise your red hand, you just tried to testify, give the board a bit of truth, all truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Osceolo, if you could, uh, tell the board and the chairman, uh, by whom you were employed and what capacity?
As, uh, the phone consulting group.
And your educational background?
Yes, I have a, uh, master's degree in city regional planning from Rutgers, uh, two thousand and five. I've been a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, uh, since, uh, two thousand and eight. Um, I have, uh, provided testimony at the borough's planning board. Uh, most recently, uh, as, as last year, but I, I provided testimony at planning and zoning boards. In eighteen counties in the state, um, I've provided testimony throughout Monmouth County and also in the course of. My practice, I've prepared, um, numerous master plans, uh, zoning ordinances, so I'm. My practice, I've prepared um numerous master plans, uh zoning ordinances, so I'm uh you know intimately familiar. Uh with the planning process.
And Mr. Osceolo, you've heard Mr. Irene's question of Mr. Jensen, uh has your uh have your credentials ever been refused by a board?
Oh, they have not, and they're current.
Mr. Irene, any other questions for the witnesses?
I have none, Mr. Vice Chairman, unless the board does. Mr. Machesney, any board members or will you accept Mr. Osce- Osceolo as an expert in the field of professional planning? Yeah, I'm good with that. Okay, thank you, Mr. Herbert.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Irene. Um, Mr. Osceolo, uh, we should uh put up, would you like to have an exhibit for your testimony?
I do. Um, if um. Um, Mr. Jensen could uh could put up uh please exhibit, and I'm looking at your list right here on the website. I believe this would be exhibit ten. Um.
Well, I think. Oh, I'm sorry. That's the one you want to pull up, but we're gonna mark it as A eight. Is that right, Mr. Herbert?
Correct.
Okay.
This is a. I'm sorry, this is a map. Yeah, so the um, this is a map of uh Grange Avenue. Uh, this depicts.
Let's get it up first and then we can start our testimony.
Perfect.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. This is a an exhibit. I believe this is from Google. You can see that in the bottom left. Uh, this is of the the site and the surrounding area. Um, as you can see, uh, the site is uh is listed. Uh, it actually has, uh, I believe it's the the price of the site, um, that you can see it uh right there on on the left. Um, and as you can see that there are, there are two properties uh that are on the other side of of Grange Avenue. Uh, where the cursor is there, there, and then also uh right to the south on Grange that have um. Uh, the the circular driveways.
Let me just interrupt you for a moment, please. So what we have is a Google aerial. Do we have a date on the Google aerial? Do we know?
Uh, yes. Is it okay for me to explain?
Yeah, please.
It's, the plan's called aerial view and the date is eight nineteen twenty-one as well. I believe all the renderings will be eight twenty-one, eight nineteen twenty-one.
Okay, so that's a plan that was prepared by you, Mr. Jensen?
Correct.
And it's dated eight nineteen twenty-one. Do you know what the date of the Google aerial that's the basis of that plan? Was that, is that Google aerial dated in any way?
Um, I I don't have it with me, but uh. I believe it was uh at least two years, years ago because of the applicant's driveway was circular.
Yeah, the the Google map, the Google maps for this neighborhood are from two thousand and nineteen. That's the latest.
Okay, and we have the, and you superimposed the tax map lines on it? Is that what we did? How did we get the property lines?
It's. It's kind of a part of the program, but yes, they're superimposed, yes.
Right, but did they come from our tax map or did they, I'm just trying to figure out where those lines came? They they come from Google Maps, I believe. If you do the Google aerial view, you can have it with the property.
Uh, what, i- if I may, what Google does is they download all of the tax maps into their database and then superimpose them on the aerials.
Okay.
It it they are brought up in that way.
All right, thank you very much. So we're gonna mark that as A dash eight and we're gonna preserve that somehow too. Yes?
Yes, I'll I'll email all our uh PDF exhibits over to the board.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Osceolo, Mr. Jesse, can can you uh speak to the relative frontages on both of those properties? I I alluded to it in my comments with Mr. Guardella, but could you, could you give us any ideas? I don't see any, there's no, obviously no measurements there. But um. What do we think the relative frontages are there to the the subject property?
Um, you know, from my end or uh or Mr. Jensen, if it's possible, if you go into, if you go into Google, you can, you can do the measurement. Um, right through Google Maps. Uh, I believe it's an option on the bottom right that you can select and you can measure from point to point. Um, and that that should be able to give us, I mean, it's uh, you know, it's approximate, but I, obviously, I think it's pretty close. I think it's pretty close.
I think they're um. The one that's the closest. Is around, I I'd say, sorry, I'm on the wrong, the wrong one. It's a little over a hundred feet.
Okay, could they look pretty close to the, I mean, just eyeballing it, it doesn't look like they're that much bigger. Definitely not a hundred and fifty feet.
No, definitely not.
Mr. Osceolo, you stated that the the property just to the south has a circular driveway. Uh, that would be one twenty-three Grange, is that correct?
Uh, I believe, uh, if Mr. Jensen, if you can pull up uh. Can you, can you go to the the subject property, please, if you can, on the aerial map, uh, the exhibit aerial map and just uh. Put the cursor on the the subject property. Just so I can confirm that I was accurate in my my representation. So that is, that is a subject property. Um, that that Mr. Jensen is pointing to. Uh, I I may have misspoken and stated that the subject property is the one with the icon exhibit. Uh, right to the north, but um, what I intended to say is that the subject property is the one in yellow. Um, on the other side of Grange, uh, that's across from the two properties that are in yellow, which both represent properties with the uh uh circular driveways.
Yeah, you were, you were incorrect in stating that the the property just to the uh south. Uh, has a circular driveway. It does not.
Yes, yes.
In fact, there aren't those circular driveways on Grange on on the entire, on that entire side of the street.
That that is correct. Yes, that is correct, sir. So the the uh, the 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 circular driveway, the only circular driveway, uh, it's my understanding on on this side of the street. Is the subject property. Um, and then, uh, you know, right across the other side of the street, uh, the circular driveway in the property. Um, if uh Mr. Jensen can point to the property, uh, the the first one and then the second one, uh, they're both uh in yellow. Um, are the subject, are the, are the properties that have uh circular driveways. And I think the the intention of this exhibit. Um, is to show that uh what's proposed this evening is is really, you know, not of character with the uh, the surroundings and and not just the surroundings. But, you know, literally, um, you know, you know, just across the street, um, or, you know, just in the uh, the the nearby surroundings uh of 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 this site. So that's the, that's the intention behind this this exhibit. Just to give the board a flavor, I think what's also important uh about this exhibit. Um, is you see the uh, the presence of pools uh in this subject property and and you can make them out. Obviously, I mean, they they speak for themselves. You can see the the blue and green. Um, you know, so what's presented this evening? Uh, and this is, this is really uh more part of uh my my planning testimony when I get into the positive and and negative criteria, but maybe this is a a bit of a preview. Um, that what's proposed is is uh is, you know, pretty consistent with the uh, the the character of the uh, the surroundings, with the immediate surroundings.
Thank you.
I just wanted to cut upon a comment earlier. I double-checked the tax map. And the the properties on the east side of the street are each have frontage of a hundred feet.
Thank you, thank you. We have one oh six.
And the, yeah, the property in question has. Uh, one oh four point eight seven.
So as to uh the uh, the positive and negative criteria, as as the board is aware, this is a permitted use. We're not, we're not here. You know, speaking to a a use variance, uh, but there are some bulk variances that uh were referenced earlier in the testimony uh for uh the uh, the coverage, the impervious coverage. Um, driveway openings, of course, uh, we're here because uh, um, you know, there is, there is one allowed and they're they're two proposed. Uh, and the the percentage of the driveway in the front yard. Um, I believe our engineer went into, um, you know, a bit of detail. On those, I'd like to just kind of couch them in, you know, from the planning standpoint, uh, planning perspective. Uh, for the purposes of uh the required proofs. Um, it's my professional opinion. That uh these variances uh can be granted under the uh C two uh criteria. Uh, that's a balancing test of the benefits of the application and the impact of the area, you know, versus any detriments. And those detriments uh need to be uh substantial. Uh, it's my opinion. Uh, and just to preface my testimony that uh the benefits certainly uh do outweigh, uh, you know, the uh, the detriments that. Um, I don't see much of any that uh that that would be uh from this application. Uh, the the municipal land use law, uh, as the board is aware, has numerous uh purposes of zoning. Um, and and as required under the, under the proofs, the justifications, uh, an application for variance uh or for variances in in this instance. Uh, needs to uh to advance at least one. Um, I see more than one. Um, I see uh at least three. Uh, number one, uh, criteria G, uh, sufficient space um. Um, in in this particular location, um, as you saw, um, or as you heard from our engineer. Um, that there is sufficient space to accommodate uh the two driveways as as uh, as um, as your board engineer had had previously stated. Um, the uh, the drive, this uh, this dual driveway uh had existed in the past. Um, yeah, for for a while, uh, and and he had not seen uh much in the way of any any drainage issues. Um, so certainly, it's my professional opinion from a planning perspective, uh, there's a, there's sufficient space to accommodate the uh the dual driveway. Uh, desirable visual environment, that's uh, that's I, um, your criteria I, I mean, I think, I think certainly. Um, you know, there's there's substantial uh uh a curb appeal that's associated uh with this application, with the proposed driveway. Um, landscaping as well as as Mr. Katie uh had stated earlier. Um, he has uh invested a substantial amount of money into uh the the landscaping of this property, uh, thrive different landscaping, so I think. In concert with this application, uh, it it's an improvement over the uh, the the current condition. Uh, and criteria H, the uh free flow of traffic. Um, as you heard. From previous witnesses, um, there there's a lot of uh, you know, foot traffic in this area, um, whether that would be. Uh, people just going for a stroll or uh with babies in the carriage or 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 walking the dogs. Um, so I think, you know, with the dual driveway, uh, it's it's a, it's a better condition and 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 planners, even though we are not engineers. Um, we always look to, um, you know, work with our clients uh to ensure that what they propose is gonna make the most sense in 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 the context of the area. Um, so I, so I certainly think that uh that criteria H would apply here as well. So that's the 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 uh, the positive criteria. Um, as for the negative criteria. Um, I certainly don't see um much in the way of any detriments with this application. I I think there are a variety of improvements. Um, certainly, there's not going to be a substantial detriment. Um, there is a a case that planners cite often, um, um, uh Bresman v. Gash. Uh, that's a uh, a court, that's a a case uh in the courts in New Jersey. Um, which uh, which essentially said, um, it it speaks to uh the the consistency with the, with a proposal. Um, with with the uh, the the character of the area, um, the established character of the area. Um, certainly, I think in 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 this instance, uh, as you had seen just from that aerial, the uh, the surroundings, you know, right across the street. On that street, um, not necessarily right across the street, but close enough, um, going towards the river. Uh, there's the exhibit again, uh, the properties in in yellow on the other side of the street, uh, they do have the the circular driveways. And again. Uh, I, you know, think the pools, uh, you know, speak for themselves. As you can see on the aerial, there are are multiple pools, you know, just in the the scope. Um, you know, of this aerial. So certainly consistent with the uh, the Bresman case. Um, you know, there there's a presence of these driveways uh and and these pools, and this is, this is a proposal that's uh, that's consistent, in my opinion, with the. The character uh of of uh of these surroundings. Um, also. When we looked, when I looked at the negative criteria, I I always look to see, and this is, this is sort of a positive thing, but it's also a a negative. Um, criteria thing as well. Um, the the drainage is a substantial improvement. And and one thing that as a planner I always look to, especially over on the public side when I do reviews, uh, is is whether. Uh, you know, an application is gonna be so uh overbearing um with with uh the improvements that. It could potentially create a drainage issue. Now, I can't speak to drainage issues per se, um, but when an engineer speaks to it. Um, you know, I certainly can can piggyback on that as well and and you add my two cents from from the planning perspective. Um, as as our engineer had said, uh, it's a substantial improvement over the uh, the the current condition. Uh, with the drains and uh and and uh and drywells. Um, and as your own um, born engineer. Had said, um, in the past, uh, you know, his understanding of of this particular area, uh, no, uh, you know, drainage issues on the street. Uh, I believe he also said that the proposed um, uh, you know, stormwater system uh is a benefit. Um, you know, so certainly when we look to um, whether a proposal is gonna present a substantial negative uh uh impact on the public good. I think by putting it in the perspective of the overall bene- uh, the benefits, you you can certainly see that. Uh, the proposal does not rise to that level. Um, another thing that I li- I, you know, always like to speak to, um, you know, relative to the context of the negative criteria. Is uh, is whether uh the applicant is proposing a a buffering and and landscaping package. Uh, I think in this instance, um, as you had heard from Mr. Katie earlier, um, there is, there's substantial landscaping and as you also heard. Uh, with the agreement with the neighbor, uh, there is a uh, uh, the the buffering as well. Uh, and lastly, um, as I had previously stated in the positive criteria. Uh, you know, the the purpose, uh, you know, of this is is to ensure that there's, there's there's safety, not just for. The older and the newer drivers in the residence, but uh the protection of the uh, the people who maybe be 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 strolling by or. People who are, you know, cycling by the house as well. Um, so again, um, you know, this is a benefit. Doesn't rise to uh the level of 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 much, in much the way of my professional opinion, a detriment, certainly not a substantial detriment. Um. Uh, um. One last thing uh that was raised in the uh review letter from from Ms. Gable. Um, the master plan, uh, it it's cited that uh, that that one of the most common concerns about new homes and additions. Uh, were parking in the property and and site design. Uh, the letter also speaks to uh protecting and uh enhancing. Uh, the the existing neighborhoods. Um, and I certainly think that uh this is. A proposal that protects and enhances uh the the existing neighborhood. So with that, uh, I'll just conclude my planning testimony that. Uh, the benefits of this application are are certainly substantial, uh, the outweigh, they they outweigh the detriments. Uh, and when I say detriments, I I don't see much in the way of any detriments um with this application.
Thank you, Mr. Osceolo. Mr. Chairman, the witness is yours.
Um, I don't have any questions from Mr. Osceolo that have not been answered. Thank you for the. The concise um incomplete testimony, Mr. Osceolo. Does any board member have questions for Mr. Osceolo?
Yeah, I have a number of questions from Mr. Osceolo. How long has Kafon. Planning been involved with this project?
Um, my partner, uh, Christine, uh, I believe has been involved uh as long as um. I don't want to say this on the record because I'm not, I'm not sure, but I know that. That that we've been involved uh at least prior to the pandemic.
So since before. The pool was built and the driveway was reduced?
Uh, I, I can't say for for certain, a- and I'm hesitant to to put that on the record just because I'm, I, I can't be certain um on that.
Yeah, okay.
I understand Mr. Osceolo was not involved earlier on, it was Miss Kafon, but if you want me to go back to Miss Kafon and get that information for you, I'd be glad to do so.
What, uh, my question is just, was the planner involved prior to. The pool going in and the driveway being removed?
So, so me personally, um, I can't speak to that, but uh my partner, uh, she has been involved, but I would just add to that. I'm I'm not, I'm not certain in, um, you know, the the start date of uh, of of uh, of, you know, her involvement with this application.
Okay, you you brought up the pools in the neighborhood. Now, the pool is supposedly not part of this application because you're treating it like an existing condition. But that was just put in when the. When the driveway that existed was removed. I'm curious if they hadn't removed the driveway and this application was the original application for. Putting in the pool and the impervious surface, the coverage. Would your planning testament, testimony be the same? Or would it be different?
Well, I, I think my 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 planning testimony, um, um, you know, as it relates to the the impervious coverage and and the relief that's required with that. Um, you know, the, uh, as as Mr. Jensen had had testified, um, you know, they're they're proposing. Um, a lot here, you know, relative to um, the uh, the the recharge and and the drainage, so. Um, you know, certainly when when I look at it from from a planning perspective, again, I I can't speak uh. Um, you know, as an engineer, I as a P E, of course, um, but when I look at. Um, the negative criteria and any potential impacts, um, I think it's a, it's a substantial benefit and and a substantial improvement. Um, you know, over the the current condition with. with the stormwater management that's proposed in conjunction with this application.
And just to supplement the record, Ms. Kaphone has confirmed Mr. Osceola's testimony.
Okay, so. So wouldn't there have been stormwater management work involved if? If the original driveway was still there, but they were adding the pool and they were before the board?
Well, I'm a bit reticent to kind of speak about the details, like the specifics of stormwater management. I mean, if I may, sir, can I defer that over to our engineer?
You're citing that as one of the positive criteria, so I'm just saying. Yeah, okay. But the other positive criteria you have are the traffic safety and the streetscape. All of which is simply related to returning the property to the condition it was in prior to them removing the driveway, right?
Well, yes.
Were doing, if you were doing planning testimony related to this being the pool with the existing driveway, then those positives that you mentioned wouldn't be part of this.
Well, I also believe.
Testimony, right?
Yeah, I mean, I also believe that Mr. Katie had stipulated earlier in the record. And I believe that it had been previously stipulated relative to the agreement with the neighborhood, the neighbor. That, you know, Mr. Katie had done a variety of buffering and landscaping improvements. And I think it was my testimony that, you know, those improvements are also benefits to the neighborhood and also benefits to the curb appeal as well. So I'm not so sure.
You know, is there a landscape plan included in the application or in the testimony here? To show us what the improvements are, or we're just taking the word that they've improved the property?
We, there was testimony from Mr. Jensen as to the improvements. We can bring him back if you'd like as to the buffering landscape.
I'm just asking if there was a landscape plan that we could see. Now?
Bill, do we have a landscaping?
So there's no landscaping planned, all the landscaping was done by the Katie's prior or will be done as part of this application. I think.
Part of this application, but there's no plan showing us what will be done as part of this application.
We would be glad to prepare a plan and submit it if that would satisfy.
Michael, do you want Mr. Katie to explain anything?
I'm just asking if it exists right now and if it was part of the application. And from what I understand is that no landscape plan exists right now.
That is correct. The landscape plan exists as we speak right now. We have other aerial photographs of the site. Mr. Katie would be glad to go over with the board.
I got a couple more questions from Mr. Osceola.
It was my understanding, just a second, it was my understanding that the landscaping, and maybe I'm wrong. That the landscaping was put in as part of the pool addition and. Say again?
It was put in as part of the pool addition and it's since been augmented.
Right, but is there additional landscaping to be put in as part of the driveway project?
There, Mr. Katie, if you could just speak to that quickly.
Yeah, I mean, is there any that we spent $50,000 in anticipation of coming? You know, well, we wanted to do it anyway. We wanted to appease, we wanted privacy, we wanted to give them privacy. And we also wanted to enhance the curb appeal. Is there any, we had talked about perhaps putting hedges, if there were pillars there, maybe putting.
But there's no, there's no.
Nothing on this, no.
My concern is that the testimony that backs up the positive criteria for the application and the planners and engineers views is based partially on improvements to the landscaping on the property. And we have no idea what the pre-existing condition was or what the improvements are that have been done or what the improvements are that are going to be done as far as the landscaping is concerned.
It's not, it's not, Mr. Shavetti, it's not part of this application though. What was done for the pool is done. It's not part of this application regarding the driveway.
They're citing that as part of the positive criteria for this application. They're saying we made $50,000 worth of landscaping improvements when we did the pool. And that is our basis for part of the positive criteria supporting this application to add the lot coverage and the driveway curb cut. But we don't have any indication of what existed prior, what exists now, or what they intend to put in when they do the driveway. And I just wanted to establish that and then ask some other questions.
Well, I understand you're trying to establish that, but while we haven't presented an official landscaping plan, we were not asked to do so by the board professionals, but we have presented testimony from both Mr. Katie and from Mr. Jensen as to the substantial buffering that has been done through landscaping. I mean, we have pictures of the trees being installed. There's a very large tree that was installed. We can present any, anything else the board would want to show that there has been substantial buffering done. And then we will agree to work with the board's professionals on any further buffering as is required.
Thank you. You know, if it would please the board, then fine, I personally, and I understand Mr. Shavetti's concern as it was put forward as part of the criterion. But in my opinion, the landscaping was done in conjunction with the pool project and not specifically in conjunction with the driveway. And correct me if I'm wrong.
That is correct.
Mrs. Quigley, thank you.
It seems to me that what we alluded to before in terms of the piecemeal sort of way that the project has been presented to the board. Where they built the pool so they didn't have to go forward with the variance because they were not sure they were going to be able to come to terms with the neighbor. That in order to come to terms with the neighbor, they probably did a lot of this work already to put themselves in a position to maybe reach common ground with the neighbor. And I understand, Mr. Shavetti, you're being sort of formalistic in terms of, well, is Mr. Osceola really entitled to say this?
I'm saying he's presenting it to you to base your decision on. You don't.
Mr. Osceola may not be entitled to say, well, they're not telling us what additional landscaping specifically they're going to do as this driveway product, project maybe. And maybe it wasn't appropriate really to give, you know, plus marks to this particular driveway plan because of landscaping that may have been put in in order to get to this point.
Absolutely.
Fairly a formalistic distinction because to me, it seems like necessity of moving forward with the pool during COVID, negotiating with the neighbor to see if the driveway was possible or not. I'm comfortable seeing it in sort of a step way where I think overall there's an improvement from the efforts that the homeowner has made. So that's my opinion on it.
Thank you, Mrs. Quigley. Thank you for that. And that sums it up very well.
Mr. Osceola, Al, are you finished?
I had a couple more questions from Mr. Osceola, actually.
Go ahead.
You stated that the coverage was not a substantial detriment, it's 25% above what's allowed in the zone. And you said that it was a substantial improvement because they're adding drainage after they create the coverage. So from a planning perspective. Is it making an improvement to pave a field and put drainage in that'll capture 100% of the stormwater as opposed to leaving it the way that it is? I'm, that's.
So I. So, Mr. Shavetti, I'm not exactly certain of the language I had used to describe. What I was intending to convey is that even though we do require a variance for the impervious coverage. What's been done relative to, as Mr. Jensen had stated, relative to the drainage improvements and stormwater management. I believe that's a mitigating factor. And perhaps I didn't use that specific verbiage mitigating factor. I'm not intending to state that this is a better condition than otherwise, but this is a.
Planning testimony was to state that this was a better condition than otherwise.
Well, I mean, we always strive to find mitigating factors for coverage. And even though if we have proposed, you know, the impervious coverage and there were no, you know, there were no proposed improvements to drainage, then I believe that can be an open question. But as Mr. Jensen had testified, there are substantial improvements. So when I looked at it from a planning perspective, my first question was, you know, what is a mitigating factor here? And I believe that this is a substantial mitigation. I also believe that, you know, the addition of the landscaping as well. Even though that might be, you know, tangentially related to impervious coverage or stormwater management. I also believe that that's a mitigating factor as well. And then also, even though that this isn't specifically related to this application, and again, I'm not going to step over my licensure boundaries here. But, you know, Mr. Gardella had stated that in the past, he had previously not seen any drainage issues. And I know this is, you know, apples to oranges here because we're talking about a new application. But based on the testimony of Mr. Jensen and then also, you know, based on my review of this application and, you know, my, the analysis that I had prepared with my partner Christine here. I certainly think that this is what we call, you know, mitigation. So when we look to balance the positive and negative criteria, we, that is, you know, we balance. And we see on the seesaw what is greater. And it's my conclusion here that despite the increased coverage, when we look to the balancing between positive and negative criteria. What's proposed, you know, with the landscaping, all the other improvements. And then also, of course, with the drainage and stormwater management, those benefits certainly do outweigh any detriments. So that was the purpose of my testimony. And if I had, you know, misconveyed that, I apologize. But that, you know, that was not my intention to present it in, you know, any other way than that.
My last question for you is that the engineer's testimony was that he thought that the 150-foot frontage for the two curb cuts wasn't necessarily required here because it's not a heavily used road. So it would be safe. And your testimony, I believe, was that this would be safer to have two curb cuts because there are a lot of pedestrians going past the end of the driveway. So I was just curious if you felt that it was appropriate because there's not much use on the street? Or if it's appropriate because there is a lot of use on the street?
Sure. So I was speaking, sure, on two points. Number one, as Mr. Katie had stated, I believe in his opening testimony. You know, that, you know, he's an older driver and he has at least one child who was a newer driver. And, you know, the allowance of two curb cuts provides for a safer condition for the residents of the house. You know, if Mr. Jensen had provided testimony relative to the amount of frontage was sufficient. From the planning testimony, my intention in speaking to the curb cuts is that I just think it's a better condition because it allows, you know, for more visibility. That's not to say that from an engineering standpoint, it may provide the 150 feet of frontage, give or take, is sufficient. I just think it's a better, you know, planning alternative to propose that. I just think it just makes sense in the context of the site and the immediate surrounding and the activity on the street as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Osceola, I'm struggling with lot area coverage. You introduced two other homes in the area across the street that had circular driveways. To your knowledge, have any of those homes exceeded their lot area coverage?
Mr. Lawford, to your question, I don't have any information. Certainly, that's something that we can obtain. I can't say if they've exceeded the lot area coverage.
And just for everyone's knowledge, that is a different zone than the zone of this property as well, so it does make a difference.
Well, what did you describe it as being part of the neighborhood? And you can't have it both ways. It's either part of the neighborhood or it's a different zone.
It is, it is part of the neighborhood.
If you're included as part of the neighborhood and part of the visual aspect of the neighborhood, then I think my question is pertinent.
So the zone, that's across the street where, of course, those two properties with the circular driveways do exist, the allowance is 35% of the impervious coverage. Whereas in this zone, you know, we're seeking relief for the impervious coverage at 30%. So there is a 5% greater coverage ratio for that zone that's across the street from this property.
But you're asking me for a 33% increase from basically 30% to 41.26%.
Remember, we're also dealing with an undersized lot for the R30 zone. Correct?
Yes, this, this lot is undersized in this zone. And again, this is a lot that's on the fringe of the underlying zone. There's a separate zone that's across the street, so the bulk standards are a bit different.
Here's a question.
But you're still talking about percentages.
Just a second, Mr. Lawford, just a question. If we were, if we conformed, what would the overage be?
You mean if the lot was bigger, Mr. Nick Chesney?
If it was a 30,000 square foot lot, as is required in the zone, would we have an issue or not have an issue? Just for my application, I'm not trying to presuppose anything, but. We, I don't, I'm not a math guy, so.
Let me ask it differently. We took out the circular driveway, would it conform?
Mr. Jensen can address that?
Yes.
I would just, so we would be 288 square feet over if we were performing a lot. Performing a lot would allow 9,000 square feet and we're at 9,288.
Okay. If we took out the circular driveway, how would that affect the lot coverage?
Well, it fits now without it.
It's now 29.9% without the circular driveway.
Sure. Did you calculate that out if we took out the circular driveway?
So we take the circular driveway out, we'd be at the existing except we would add the 354 square feet for the rear patio.
Right, so you'd still be over.
No, yeah, just let me do one calculation real quick.
Oh, I understand, I understand. Sorry, I misunderstood your question. Oh, I understand. I understand. Sorry, I misunderstood your question.
Yes, we'd be, if we just if we took the existing and added the rear patio, we'd be at thirty one point six percent. Thirty one point six percent over.
You'd still be over.
Yes.
Okay. Any more, Mr. Lawford? Dr. Lawford? Any other board members have questions of Mr. Osseo?
I have a question, and it may be a question for the planner, maybe a question for counsel, but I'll just kind of put it out there. And and we've been kind of alluding to this. But we we heard testimony from Mr. Katie, and I take him as word as to kind of how this developed and why it developed the way it did. With, you know, removing the driveway to support the pool and then coming back to the driveway, right? But I I think we have to acknowledge that that's just kind of an interesting or odd set of facts, right? And it all happened within a period of a couple of years. So it it could be viewed as multiple steps taken to kind of overcome an ordinance. And and I don't think that's what's happening here, certainly intentionally, and we heard testimony contrary to that. But I'm just wondering how we're supposed to look at that from kind of a planning perspective and a legal perspective. Is there any standard out there for kind of multiple steps taken within a period of time that achieve a certain result? Because this really could be viewed as kind of getting around the ordinance, right? And I I I'm a little concerned with the precedent that that would set. If other people saw this and thought, well, you know, over a few years, maybe we could take steps to overcome that. So I'm just curious how we're supposed to think about that. Planner or council has any thoughts on that?
Sure. And as you heard the testimony from Mr. Katie and our other witnesses, this this is not something where anyone's trying to get one over on the town or anything like that. Mr. Katie and his neighbor, the calls you've heard, the agreement that was placed upon the record. Was struggling to be able to get them on board with with what he was trying to do with the property. And, you know, he wants to be a good neighbor. He was worried that they would object. He was worried that it that it could be litigated in court and was worried that it would take, you know, years to to accomplish, if at all. So, you know, he decided, as you heard from his testimony, to move forward with the pool by taking out the driveway. So it was conforming, so that he'd be able to provide a pool during COVID to his kids. And 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 that is simply how it was done. It wasn't trying. It wasn't meant to try to get around the board. But as as you heard from him, as his kids have gotten a little bit older and are starting to drive, it's becoming a safety issue. And he wants to be able to use, you know, the circular driveway again as as a way of safe ingress and egress to the property. The driveway was there before. It fits in with the character of the neighborhood. It fits in with the character of the property. That's the testimony again. There was never any nefarious effort beyond Mr. Katie to get around the board. He was just, again, trying to provide a pool. And everyone remembers, you know, back when COVID began, how hard it was to be able to get a pool, a pool for his family. And the kids, like my kids were struggling. I think a lot of people people out there, their kids were struggling during COVID, especially because they couldn't see their friends and things like that. And he's tried to provide an activity within the yard that was safe and, you know, and and protected from COVID. And the pool provided that. Pool is a small pool. It's, you know, it's it's not something that's that's obnoxious. It's not like some of these water parks that you see some of these people being built, which is a small rectangular pool in the backyard. You want to be able to provide that for, especially for his daughter.
Yeah, and I don't mean to imply anything nefarious. Certainly appreciate over the last couple of years, it's certainly been unique circumstances. But I'm I'm just trying to understand from a planning perspective. Is there any guidance on how we're supposed to think about that or any standard we should be following? Just because, you know, it does seem like steps taken within a short period of time. And I mean, that could be viewed as kind of inconsistent with zoning ordinances and master plans and so on.
I am not a planner. I'm just an attorney. I went to law school because I can't do our engineering or planning. I'm married to a planner, but I'm not a planner myself. And I do have a planner here with me that can address this. But again, and and Mr. Irene is a far better attorney than I am. But as he as he can tell you, every case rises and falls on its own on a case by case basis. No precedent is being set here. It's just it's it's an odd set of circumstances, again, due to COVID, due to family circumstance. That the matter was proceeded in this way. Justin, is there any planning testimony we could give with regard to how the other procedural history of this case occurred?
I mean, sure, I mean, I I I would just say, you know, in the in in the last year and a half. You know, from a professional standpoint, most of the cases that I've been involved in, and I've been involved in a lot. A lot of them have circumstances that 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 are relating to COVID, especially with 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 commercial cases. Some residential cases as well. Circumstances have changed. You know, people's lives have have changed dramatically. They're 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 trying to, you know, do what's right for for their families and and their kids. Over on the 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 commercial side, they're trying to adapt to. You know, we've we've been up then, you know, we we've, you know, the 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 circumstances have changed for for everyone. I I think in this particular instance, it's my understanding and in speaking with the Kates. And and last I spoke with them was this afternoon. It's a a unique set of circumstances. They did what, you know, they had they had thought was the right thing to do when 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 grappling with COVID. I I think as as you heard from Mr. Katie and and Mr. Herbert, you know, relative to the discussions and the negotiations with their neighbors. They're they're trying to do what's right, you know, which what's right for 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 their neighbor as well. So I think it's just a uni- a a a unique set of circumstances, which probably wouldn't exist without COVID. You know, so I think from from a planning standpoint, I see this more as a life standpoint as opposed to COVID, you know, you know, planning itself. But but I believe that, you know, they're 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 just trying to do what what would make sense for for their family. And it's just how how, you know, it 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 transpired. It's, you know, one thing led to the the other, and and that's just how it it happens.
Mr. Osseo, I I can, you know, I appreciate your comments, but to piggyback on Mr. Ludman's comments. I I would feel a little bit differently or could explain it a little bit differently if the curb cut and the existing apron were not left behind with the initial project. They they remained. And so the the sequence of this, with the remaining curb cut and the remaining paving that's in that area, being left behind, are a little troubling.
Again, there was no intention with leaving the curb cut the way it was at that time. You know, it it to in order to take out that curb cut, we have to be substantial amount of work done on both the the curb and and the sidewalk up there. So, you know, a choice was made that, you know, it was well enough left alone. And, you know, again, as Mr. Katie testified, he was unsure whether he would ever come to an agreement with his neighbor. So it could have been that no agreement was struck. We don't know what the circumstance. He didn't know the circumstances of COVID would lead to. So the the curb cuts were just left really just because it would have been more expensive to to take them out at that point.
Again. The issue here, the issue here is not with the neighbor.
Sorry, we lost you, Mr. Dr. Lawford. You're breaking up.
The zoning board and the and the lot coverage. So I, you know.
Did anybody else lose?
Yeah, I can't hear him.
The issue here is with a lot coverage and the zoning board. So to bring up the the neighbor situation. Okay, well, can can you hear me now?
You're breaking up quite badly, Skip.
If you turn off your camera, sometimes that helps.
Where I have better coverage. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I I think the issue, the point that I was trying to make is that the issue here is not with the neighbor. We keep bringing up the agreement with the neighbor. But the the issue here is really more with the zoning board and the lot coverage than it is with the neighbor. So I I I don't really appreciate the fact that you continue to base this on the neighbor. I think it's more lot coverage and an issue with the zoning board rather than an issue with the neighbor.
I think I think the neighbor issue is, it it kind of gives background as to why the pool was put in first. And and I I know they keep alluding to that, and I agree with you. It hasn't. It has very no no bearing on the lot coverage issue. But I believe it does explain, or that's the explanation, as to why the timeline went as it did and and not to appear to be, we're trying to get around something. Just anecdotally for for evocation, we we had an application some time ago that, if you didn't know the situation, may have been seen in the same sort of light and and but but having spoken prior to, and I was not noticed on this, obviously. But, you know, I know the reason that 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 the the applicants went in the timeline they did. But to an outsider, it may have looked quite similar. Okay, so I'm just going to put that out there for for food for thought, that not everything is on the surface as it as it may seem. And I do want to give the Kates the benefit of the doubt, obviously.
The concern here was that the neighbor was going to object at the zoning board meeting, and they weren't going to get the variance at the zoning board meeting. So this was a hundred percent about the zoning board and then them getting an approval of variance first time around.
Well, it was also, as you heard from Mr. Katie, about trying to be a good neighbor and trying to have good relationships with his neighbor. He did not want to proceed until he was able to solve that as well. I don't think anyone enjoys being able, having to live in a neighborhood where you don't get along with your neighbor. And and he wanted to. He wanted to straighten that out as well.
Okay. All right, let's get back on track. Does anybody else have questions of Mr. Osseo or? Yeah, Mr. Osseo, I think we're on. Nobody? All right, I'll open the public then. Does anyone in the public have questions of Mr. Osseo's testimony? Don't see any hands. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Osseo. Uh, back to you, Mr. Herbert. Anymore?
I have no further witnesses, Mr. Chairman. I again wanted to emphasize to everyone, you've heard the arguments are nauseous as to the procedural history here. Again, no.
Mr. Herbert, I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt you, but before you do your summation, why don't we just see if there's any parties that want to make comments? I assume there aren't, but that way you have an opportunity to address those in your closing remarks.
And I really appreciate that, Mr. Irene. I I misinterpreted. I thought we were on that part, but please go ahead.
So, Mr. Nachesny, I I know we opened it to anybody that wanted to question Mr. Osseo, who was Mr. Herbert's last witness. And I would suggest at this point, although I'm assuming there are none, we should just find out if there are any interested parties in the audience who wish to make any comments, offer any testimony with regard to the application.
Thank you, Mr. Irene.
So this is any interested parties, this is your opportunity. If you'd like to make any comments, present any testimony with regard to the application, this is your opportunity to do so. And we're now soliciting any of those comments. Raise your hand or otherwise signify to our board secretary, Ms. Papa. And we have no response, Ms. Papa?
No response.
And the record will reflect no response. So are we to the point now, Mr. Nachesny, where we want to offer Mr. Herbert an opportunity to give us his closing remarks?
Yes, yes, we do.
Let's do that.
Thank you, Mr. Irene. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and all board members and and the professionals involved here. I really want to express on behalf of my client our appreciation for your time and efforts here. You know, if you're a board member, you're a voluntary voluntary board. And, you know, we always like to talk about it. I want to increase. I want to double your pay. Will you double zero? It's still zero. So again, we appreciate everyone's efforts here tonight. And I I again hope that we're able to present a a cogent application. And you understand how we came to this position. We've talked about it here. Again, we're looking for the free free variances. Really, the important one is the maximum lot coverage. You've heard testimony from Mr. Jensen, how the driveway is needed from a safety standpoint and how we are ameliorating any stormwater concerns out there. As you as you heard from your own engineer, a stormwater is not a concern in this part of the of the town. But that we are taking making taking measures to make the stormwater situation out there even better. You've heard testimony that it just left us grass. It still would run off. If we go ahead and install the utilities we have here, we we're you'd have to recharge. We are now making a a situation that is good even better and without a a negative impact upon the neighbors or the neighbor put. You also heard with regard to pedestrian traffic and bicycle traffic and as well as slow vehicle traffic. That this type of of a driveway would make it make for a safer situation and be able to to bring cars off of the road as well. You heard from Mr. Osseo as to the positive and negative criteria, as to why this application for the variances should be approved. In that it does satisfy some of the N L U L requirements. So with that, again, I appreciate everyone's time and efforts here. We are here to listen. If anyone has any further concerns, we would be glad to satisfy them if if possible. We also will work with the board professionals on anything further that they need. And we agree to comply with the board professionals' opinion letters. So with that, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I thank everyone involved.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert.
All right, discussion. This will be fun. You know what's fun about this as being chairman? I don't have to go first like I always do. Guys?
Yeah, I have a couple of things to say. Surprise, surprise. You know, I mean, as an alternate member of the zoning board, I'm part of the deliberative process. But in the case where there are enough votes, I'm not voting on it. And that's part of the reason why I ask a whole lot of questions and make a lot of comments. Because that's how I contribute to the deliberative process that leads up to the ultimate decision on the variance.
And that is extremely appreciated, by the way.
I think that what you really have to look at is that this was originally, at one point in time, an application for a pool and a patio, which was withdrawn because they were concerned that objections from the neighbor were going to prevent them from getting a variance from the zoning board. The neighbor's objections could not have been about the coverage in the front yard where the driveway already existed or the drainage to that. It could only have been about the pool and the coverage that was going to be added to the backyard. Because that's the only thing that's really new here. The driveway is not new. It existed previously. So they removed the coverage in the front yard so that they could get under the requirement for the variance for the for the lot coverage, and they built the pool. And at some point after that, spent however much money they did spend to put in landscaping and buffering and come to whatever agreement we don't have in front of us with the neighbors. So the neighbors would not object to the proceedings when they wanted to put the driveway back in. So I I think you really need to to frame this with that in mind. The this is not about whether the neighbor objected or not. It's it's about whether the neighbor objected to the zoning board proceedings.
Well, just let me interject. It's not just. Let's just be clear. It's not about whether any interested party objects or comes out in favor. It's a question that the board has to make a determination as to whether whatever application is before it. The board has to make a determination as to whether or not it finds that the app can have proven the standards under the municipal land law. Regardless of whether the entire. I would I would hazard to to say we should not be jumping to conclusions and just, you know, just standing in the middle. Jumping to the conclusion as to why there may or may not have been objection. It could have been noise. It could have been a proximity to the sidelines. We don't know. And I too, and just as a warning, I would be very careful to.
In my opinion. In my opinion, the objection could only have been based on.
Shea Betty, you're saying it could only have been this. We don't have the neighbors. They didn't object to this proceeding. They have agreed to some.
And we don't have that agreement.
Say, please, I'm sure that Mr. Herbert would be willing to submit a written copy of the agreement and that the Kates would be meanable to include the specific agreement into the resolution passed by the board, which I happen to think would probably be a good idea since it seems to have been painted. which I happen to think would probably be a good idea since it seems to have been painstakingly negotiated for council.
Are you going to make your decision without having seen that first?
The last thing we would want to do is have six months go by and have you guys start, you know, arguing with each other over the backyard about whether the size trees you're putting in are the right size or whatever. So to me, I'm satisfied with the protection offered by the agreement um, regarding the neighbor's participation. You're exactly right, Mr. Shea Betty, that it has to do with the lot coverage, but that's what we're here to consider. And we can't really speculate about the neighbor's position on that issue.
Agreed. We can only look at the application in front of us and not what was previously done, which which was which conformed. And that's, and if you want to make it about front yard lot coverage, then that's what it's about. You cannot speculate on why there would have been or what the neighbor would have complained about had they come before the zoning board back in in when the application was first brought to us. I don't know, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, whenever that was. And that's. You can speculate all you want, but I don't think you can say it definitively as as I think you have been. Can only look at what we have in front of us.
Right, but we don't have in front of us what was testified to by the attorney about this agreement that exists, but we don't, we don't know what's in it. He he read us a summary, he gave us a summary of it.
And I believe it was offered that we're going to circulate that, was that not right?
Okay, but not before you make your decision.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert.
But not before you make your decision.
I can hold it up to the camera if that helps. Uh, here's the signature page. So, uh, you know.
I'm satisfied that Mr. Herbert represented the main points of the agreement worked out by the council for the neighbor and I presume Mr. Herbert.
Yes, and 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 if this was the live meeting, I'd be able to hand you the agreement and you'd be able to look at it. So I I apologize, I can't do that.
Would it have been better if we had it in advance so that we sort of digested, you know, this background which seems to be so problematic?
Right, but 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 again, remember, the reason for the agreement was to explain the procedure here, not the the argument. The chairman has it correct and that the argument is about, is the positive and negative criteria met with regard to uh, the impervious surface and the other variances.
But if only to remove it, Mr. Herbert, from the point of contention that has sort of sprung up tonight.
Right.
Who's next?
I'm going next. Yeah, I'll go next. Uh, I I have really one issue. Um, and that issue was lot area coverage. And um, we have an ordinance, the ordinance is there for a reason. And I think we'd be setting a horrible precedent if we approved a project that allowed for thirty-three percent above what the ordinance requires. Uh, I don't think that the criteria, the hardship criteria has been adequately proved. And I don't see any hardship to justify either a C one or a C two variance. I don't believe that there's a safety issue on Grange. And um, uh, my issue here is lot area coverage. And if we allow this kind of an increase in lot area coverage, I think we're setting a horrible precedent. I will also state that I think that the K Ds have done a wonderful job with the cosmetic approach to this property. Uh, I think what they proposed is attractive. I think what they've done is in the best interest of their family, and I applaud them for that. Uh, but I really, really can't get past the lot area coverage. And I don't think that it's appropriate for us as a board to go against as an ordinance that it puts this much above that lot coverage. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you for that, Dr. Lawfer. I would, I I I really don't have anything else to add, but I'm glad you raised those points. I would concur with you. Um, I I'm not listening about a letter or agreement with two neighbors. You know, I appreciate all the things that the K Ds have done. I understand they're fine and upstanding in the community. I I would agree, I'm very concerned on the coverage and setting a precedent. So just to be considered, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may really quickly, this is not setting a precedent, this is a case by case basis application. Uh, Mr. Irene, I I don't know if you agree with me on that, but I I don't think there's anything precedent being set here.
Well, I and you can make that statement for the for the record, Mr. Herbert. Generally, every application rises and falls on its own merits, but we, of course, do know that applicants make the argument that what they're proposing is not going to be inconsistent with what's in the neighborhood. And it's always a concern of the board. So it's still to the board to make a determination as to whether or not they believe the applicant has made out the positive and negative criteria under the municipal land use law.
Mr. Herbert, you used other other uh, properties in the neighborhood uh, as making a case for the circular driveway. So you really shouldn't do it both ways. Uh, I think this is a lot coverage issue. And uh, I I think that even if it stands on its own, to go this far above the uh, you know, the required ordinance, I think is is inappropriate.
And I and I would just suggest that it's really not a time for debate. I believe the the vice chairman has put it to the board members for their comments. You may want to move the comments along, Mr. Vice Chairman, because at some point. Testimony is over, we we really should not be uh, going back and and asking questions of of the professionals. Um, Mr. Ridgway, anymore? No. Mr. Ryan, I haven't heard much from you tonight.
Oh, sir, thank you so much.
Well, you know, certainly to have um, ten percent extra lot coverage is not something to take lightly. There's a reason why if you weren't in this place in in town uh, with respect to having a second curb cut, uh, percent driveway coverage in the front yard. Um, and and that's why the Ks are here tonight to see if they can overcome and um, provide the proofs necessary to grant what I believe is a C two variance. Um, I thought that their professionals did a credible job of putting the case on uh, on the record. Um, certainly, we've seen applicants come before us with a lot less with efforts to uh, try to control runoff. Um, I thought that um, the borough engineer's testimony was compelling uh, where I said uh, that there is no issue in that part of town. And that clearly the trench drain system is going to uh, do a lot mitigate runoff coming off the property. There was also testimony that since uh, the lot is relatively uh, flat, you're not going to have a steep slope situation where there's a lot of runoff that's going to come shooting out into into Grange. Um, I I think the applicants did a a a terrible job of explaining how this situation got to where it was. Um, I would have liked to have seen the agreement before tonight, but really it's not relevant to what is going on tonight, and that is a uh, variance request for for lot coverage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Ms. Quigley?
I follow um, Mr. Ryan's reasoning in terms of the presentation tonight. I think it does come down to lot coverage. It's not really um, an issue as to whether there's a hardship, it's more of a balancing act. And I think that uh, given the undersized nature of the lot and the, you know, the fact that there was a circular driveway there before, um, I'm not offended by the piecemeal approach that the K Ds took with this application. Um, I am in favor of uh, granting the requested variances on the condition that the settlement with the neighbors um, actually be part of the resolution, just because I think while it's not certainly a central part of what we're considering here tonight, it is important in terms of what the uh, what the people on the ground feel was necessary to make the plan acceptable. So that's.
Thank you, Mrs. Quigley. Mr. Consola? What do you got? You're on mute, sir.
All right, I'm off mute.
Hey.
Um, so initially I shared similar concerns uh, as Dr. Lawfer and Mr. Ridgway. Um, but along with Mr. Ryan, a lot of those, I agree with him, a lot of those concerns were uh, answered or alleviated by uh, Mr. Goodell's uh, testimony, the engineer. Um, you know, this is a lot area coverage issue without a doubt. Uh, but with the drainage system that the K Ds are going to employ to address some of the issues with stormwater runoff. Um, you know, I think that that is a uh, a fair trade off. And um, you know, it sounds like it's not going to be an inexpensive fix to this problem. So if someone is willing to invest that type of money to address some very serious issues when you're very close to uh, the river there, uh, stormwater runoff. Um, you know, I I appreciate that. I appreciate that as a as a a member of the board. And also I appreciate that as somebody who lives in town and who uses the river on a regular basis. Um, you know, the 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 circular driveway has been there previously. There are two other circular driveways in the neighborhood, so it's not affecting the character of the neighborhood. Um, so I fully support this. I would like to add, which I'm sure it already is part of the contingency on this, um, that it is with the approval of the collection system by the town engineer.
Yeah, I believe that that anything would have to be conditioned as such.
Yeah, but but other than that, I think, you know, it a great plan. Um, you know, the K Ds did a great job with their people. I would also like to add, Mr. Katie, I don't think you're an older driver because I think we are roughly of the same vintage. So I take uh, I take a slight umbrage of that, but anyway, but that is it.
Thanks, Paul. Adam?
Yeah, this is a obviously a very interesting and difficult one. Um, and I I think I agree with what everyone said about the applicants and and their uh, professionals providing a um, very good presentation, very good application. I think it, I I'm trying to, you know, think through the testimony and the key facts for me, because I think we're because of the unique circumstances, we're kind of talking about things that have developed over time, what we can think about and what we can't. Um, and and I do agree with Ms. Quigley that we we can't really speculate about the neighbor's position here. We're kind of bound by the facts, I think, that were presented to us. Um, we didn't hear any testimony from neighbors or anything contradictory, and so I am inclined to kind of rely on what's been presented here before us. Um, and we also heard testimony from the applicant, which I think was very compelling and helpful and just kind of walking us through and giving us context as to why things develop the way they did. Um, and and just with respect to the agreement, I, you know, agree it should have been presented in advance, but I also don't really have an issue with council summarizing councils, you know, license presenting before the board in good faith and, you know, taking first word that it's been presented accurately. Um, so I think those are the facts that, you know, I'm really thinking about. I I do tend to agree that this is about lot coverage and we're looking at something that's thirty-three percent over. Um, really significant over, so I'm trying to look to um, reasons as to why that should be permissible, and I I'm struggling to get there, honestly. Um, we didn't see proof of comparable lot coverage at neighbors. You know, we looked at pictures, but I don't think there are any facts presented on this point unless others heard something different. It just, there wasn't really any comparable proving as to why it should be acceptable. There was a lot of good discussion about drainage, and I think that was helpful, you know, in alleviating some concerns, particularly from the borough engineers, why, you know, that we don't have concerns in that area and, you know, there's going to be significant improvements there. But I'm also kind of struggling with how this developed, and we heard a lot of testimony about kind of landscaping, but we didn't really see any verification of landscaping or proof or what was going to be done or what's been done. And so we're just kind of relying on different things here. And um, yeah, I mean, to me, this is just, it's too much over the ordinance. I think we really need a powerful case for that in order to grant the order, yeah, the 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 um, the variance. And so I don't think personally that I can get there. I mean, I'm I'm just not there on that point.
Appreciate that. Um, for me, I I definitely had a a preconceived notion when it came into this about what was um, the goals and and how the timeline proceeded, which which has been swayed by some some excellent testimony by the professionals and the K Ds as well. And I and I do understand how this came about. I know we we harped on this landscaping thing. In my opinion, the landscaping, it was for the other, and we're keeping, we keep conflating the two, putting the two projects together. And you cannot think about what happened with the pool, because it really never, it was not before us, and it's not a case that I can worry about. They keep, I know they keep mentioning landscaping, but the landscaping really was related to the pool project and not to what is proposed here, and I'm trying to stick to what is proposed here. Um, I know the property, I remember what it looked like before uh, Atlantic built that house there, and there was a circular driveway there. There are many or several circular driveways in the neighborhood on undersized lots, which I don't quite understand how they got built there, but they're there. Um, and historically have been there. Uh, for me, when we talk about lot coverage, there are two things we look at, and one of which is building coverage, which I think is a big issue. And then lot impervious coverage. The big issue with building coverage obviously is bulk. The problem with lot impervious coverage in my mind is runoff and stormwater and that sort of thing. And Mr. Goodell's testimony uh, put my mind at ease with that, where this is a much better um, uh, solution than, basically it says, yes, you can have the superbious coverage and it can be mitigated. I think it is somewhat of a unique situation as there is no grading problems, we have a fairly flat lot. We don't have a big uh, water table issue there. And and for me, that kind of seals it. Um, as far as the opposite side of the street being a different zone, uh, neighborhoods are not defined by zones. It's it's the houses around you. We we know in this town that that the zones are are very strangely inserted in places. And you've just got to look at the neighborhood as a whole. Um, and that's it for me. I I I think, yes, it is a big number. Yes, we are constrained because it is an undersized piece of property. Uh, had it been a conforming lot, we're looking at two percent over, not ten percent over. Um, and that's what I got. And it's part of the C two is, does it make more zoning sense? It's not necessarily a hardship thing. And uh, looking at the property visually, aesthetically, functionally, yes, the restoring what was there, I think, makes sense to me. So. Uh, this is going to be an interesting one. Why is it everyone that I get to adjudicate is always interesting? Um, anybody have anything else? Anybody feel strong enough to make a motion? Again, down to me. Uh, I will make a motion to approve the plan as submitted on the condition of the permit for street opening be submitted. And the uh, plan for the uh, recharge system for the front yard approved by the borough engineer. Hold on, Mr. Nachesny. If I may. You may. The the stipulations made by the applicant on the record, including the stipulations made as part of the agreement that was marked as A dash six. The applicant stipulation that they would conform to the recommendations or requirements of the board's professionals. The revision in the plan to substitute blue stepping stones six inches between for the concrete and rear patio that was in the initial plan. The proposed stormwater management plan to be subject to review and approval by the substitute board engineer slash borough engineer. Any and all other stipulations made during the record, do you want to see a landscaping plan as part of the motion?
Submission of a landscaping plan as well as submission of the agreement between the Coles and the K Ds.
Okay. And I believe those are my notes. Any other stipulations made during the record? So is that the motion?
That is the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have, we have moved, we have a second. So Sandy, you're going to call the first seven members, obviously, right?
Yep, Mr. Nachesny.
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley.
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway.
No.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Ledman.
No.
Dr. Lawfer.
No.
Mr. Consala.
Yes.
I have four votes in favor, three votes against, is that right, Sandy?
Yes.
So it's a simple majority for the bulk variances, the uh, motion carries, the application's approved with those conditions.
Thank you, board members.
Congratulations, Mr. Katie.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
I want to thank the uh, the professionals for really good, uh, you know, in my mind, I said it was going to take a strong case to 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 convince people on this one, and I think you did a good job.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate the board's time and efforts to get there.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you, good night, everyone. Stay safe.
Everybody, appreciate it.
All right. Moving on. There is only one administrative item, which is the uh, approval of minutes from the August nineteenth meeting, meeting for those. There is only one administrative item, which is the, uh, approval of the minutes from the August nineteenth meeting, meeting for those few of us that were there. Uh, I have reviewed them and everything's in order, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the August nineteenth being as submitted. I'll second it. Thanks, Marty.
Hey, Mr. Nachesny.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Ledman.
Yes.
Dr. Lawfer.
Yes.
And Mr. Sheavetti.
Uh, you're on mute. Yes. Thank you. Um, any members of the public want to make any comments, criticisms, statements? Tell us what a great job we did. But not with regard to that application or any other application pending before the board. Never. I guess not. Everybody good?
Good night.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
I want to thank, I want to thank Rich for filling in. Thanks very much, Rich, uh, for coming on and, and, and helping us out here.
No problem, guys. Anytime.
Appreciate it. Everybody have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, Sandy.
All righty.
Good night.
Good night.